There it is.
All right. I think we're ready to go.
Okay, Anne, it's all yours.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. For having us today. My colleagues are hopefully jumping on here as well to help me share just a little bit. We just wanted to connect with you and update you as to what OSU in Hood River Extension has been up to in the last months and strange blur of a year. And I do have a little presentation that I'm hoping to be able to share. Hmm, it says my screen sharing is paused. I wonder what that is. Let me try again. Lynetta, do you have or does it says screen sharing is paused? I'm not sure if it might be possible, too.
One moment, please. Let me take a look at this.
Thank you.
It says all panelists, so you should be able to share.
Rezoom.
Are you sharing?
I am not.
Is anyone, yeah, is anyone else?
There, it says your screen sharing.
Really?
Yep.
Okay. But I'm not seeing it. Technology.
It should be asking you which window you want to share. It should be giving you a selector with the choice of windows.
Yeah, I.
You've done this.
I've done it. We use Zoom a lot, but um, I, I, uh, rezoom.
Rezoom.
Heavens.
We could potentially pull up the packet and share the PDF version of the PowerPoint.
I have that? Oh, I'm so sorry. I don't know if I'm not what I'm, let me try. I wonder why it keeps saying your screen sharing is paused. Maybe, maybe that would be good. So sorry.
Apologize. One moment, please.
I've got mine up. If the rest commissioners can get theirs up, you'll have to let us know when to move the screen, Anne.
Okay. In which, okay, that's a, that's, that's a good backup plan. I just have to then, thank you for being willing to shift around on the fly. I guess that's what technology requires of us these days.
One of us could screen share our PDF. If somebody wanted to do that, Arthur.
You want me to try that?
That would be great. I understand you all are brand new at Zoom and here I am, having been using it quite a bit and it's, anyway, maybe I'll, I'll see if you all are, if you're gonna give that a little.
Are you waiting for me to share? Is that what I'm supposed to be doing?
Yes, if you might, that would be fabulous.
If you have your packet up.
Uh, yeah, I do set to the right page, but I have to find the Firefox. Here we go. You see it?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, well.
Okay.
You, you know us. We are OSU Extension and we're here, right here in your community and that you support us is, we're so grateful for that. You can go to the next slide. And of course, we are in every county in Oregon, as well as an extension office at the Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs. And you can go to the next. This one just has some quick facts of some of the, the impacts that we're having and the involvement that we have across the whole state. We here in Hood River, you'll be hearing a little bit about the HUNTOS program. You see that across the state, we have 3,700 students that participate in HUNTOS. We've had that program here in Hood River County for the last four years, really, maybe going on, on five now. Just a little note, I noticed where it talks about the 900-plus peer-reviewed extension publications. Right now, our extension office, we are really fully staffed in terms of our programs. We have a staff person in each, coordinating each of our programs, but we did have our office administrators both retire in this past year. So right now, we have a, an open position for an office specialist and that person will be our front office person. In the meantime, I've been serving in that role, just answering some phone calls and I utilized this extension catalog just recently myself. You'd be amazed, maybe you wouldn't, at the wide range of phone calls that we get from people in the community, just needing information about this or that, some of which we have coordinators and people, you know, on staff that are specialists, of course, you know, in ag or, or food preservation, but this call was for someone wanting help with their horse pasture. And that's not really a, an area that we have a whole lot of need for here, but I was able to look in the extension catalog and send some resources to that person and as well connected with them with our Rangeland Extension Specialists just in our Wasco County. So we, we are resourceful in being able to draw upon a lot of different experts through the university and in our extension services and all of these great publications that we have in our catalog and even nationwide through the Ask an Expert question and answer program that we have that's allows people to input a question and get an answer really pretty quickly from either OSU researchers or if it's something that we don't have expertise in, that Ask an Expert goes nationwide to, to extension professionals across the country. So we can go to the next slide. Here, you'll see the names of all of our coordinators that we have onboard and just note, noting that for every dollar of investment of the county, you will, we leverage and bring $4 of services back to our county residents through the work that we do. And we've got, yeah, you can see all the names of our, our folks. So of course, ag and food systems and gardening are a huge part of OSU Extension. You can scroll down. Ashley Thompson is our, our county horticulturist. She's on leave right now, but will, so not able to be with us right now, but she's involved, as you may all know, in a number of demonstrations and trials. She's been very active in giving virtual workshops and virtual field days to connect with the orchardists. And in some ways, that's been, I spoke with one orchardist who felt that that worked really well for her. She was able to connect in and not devote a, you know, full day to, or morning to go and attend a field day. She, she was able to get the information she needed about, um, the things that she was most, it was most important for her. I think she was working right then on the application of the pest, the, why is that? You know what I'm talking about, the, the pesticides, yes. And Ashley and Lauren, I believe Lauren will be joining in here shortly. She'll be able to share a lot more about some of the efforts that Ashley and she were very engaged in and continue to be in terms of preparing and supporting our orchardists and our migrant workers around, around the pandemic and all of the needs that we have to protect our, our workers. So you can scroll down a little bit further. Megan Wickersham is our Master Gardener Coordinator and she has been excited to be able to get going again with some of the, the Master Gardener volunteers are a very enthusiastic and rambunctious group, really have been chomping at the bit to get back out into the gardens. And you can see that we do have folks that are working at Fish Food Bank and a number of other gardens around the community, demonstration garden at our extension office. There's one at the library. A new large plot has recently been opened up. That's a partnership with The Next Door and Claire House. So they have been gardening with our master gardeners for quite a while, but they, they just recently opened up a great new field so that they can plant even more there at the extension, just, just by our, the master gardener's greenhouse, if you have ever had a chance to see that, of course, involved with, at the Fish Food Bank. Um, she's also got classes that are happening online, virtual classes, and I can speak to the Seed to Supper class, which I'm taking with Megan. It's a really a fantastic beginning gardening class that starts up, is giving us a lot of great information so that we don't just jump in there and throw our plant starts in the dirt that is not ready for it and all of the things, mistakes that I've made over the many years in gardening, I am hoping to avoid this year. Excited about that class. It even ends with a food preparation class. So taking your seeds and planting them and then all the way to harvest. And Lauren Kramer's gonna teach that part. And so it's pretty, pretty cool. And the Ask, if you do have questions, the Ask a Master Gardener is available, has been all year virtually, and those, those volunteers are now available in our office for if people have to drop something off and get something identified or get some, something, a question answered. So even though our office is not officially open to the public to, we, we are able to serve in some small ways and have some of our volunteers in the office. So you can scroll down a little bit more. Of course, youth education and outreach is a huge part of what we do at Extension. And I'm wondering if Dani Anala is available to share a little bit about 4H. Are you on, Dani?
Are me?
Can scroll down. One more.
Yeah, so 4H Development, we are rolling out lots of programs right now. I'm in partnership with the Hood River County School District and doing a lot of STEM enrichment around embryology. Where, so we're hatching a lot of chicks in the classrooms right now. We're working with kindergarten through fifth grade and we're also streaming Hatch virtually for those kids that are still distant learning through the Options Academy. We're also, we also offered some spring break virtual STEM series in partnership with the Columbia Gorge STEM Hub. They sent STEM kits home to students and we offered some online courses with those kits. I'm also working on babysitter training. It's always been a really popular event for our training for Hood River County. We get lots of requests for it and I went ahead and converted it to a virtual format a last summer. And our next training is coming up in May. We offer it each quarter. And so at the end of May, we will have trained about 450 students across the state in babysitter training. And so it's been a very popular program, especially amongst the pandemic and there's a lot of older siblings at home with younger siblings or cousins. And then of course, when we think about 4H, we often think about the county fair and many of you are very aware of the opportunities that kids have to participate at the Hood River County Fair. And last year, we did host a modified county fair COVID-friendly event where most of the activities were virtual and only the market animals arrived on site so that they could be sold and transported from there. This year, we're going ahead and we're working closely with the Fair Board in planning for county fair events and making sure we have lots of plans in place in the event that we need to modify things or operate at different levels. So we're moving forward and making sure that there will be something for the youth to participate in.
Thanks, Dan. You can scroll down a little bit further. And Open Campus is the program that I coordinate and we have three major focus areas, the HUNTOS program and partnerships with our K-12 schools as part of what we're doing with, for college access. And the goal number two has to do with supporting folks in completing degrees. I work closely with CGCC in trying to develop new pathways for degree, for transfer students. That's not always been the easiest thing. It's in Oregon, our, our community colleges and our university system don't have a really clean matchup with, for students who are wanting to transfer. So that's something that I continue to work with CGCC on and looking at some new possible pathways. It was, I guess, in fall of 2019 that we were able to develop a pathway for an education program, teacher education program. And I'm now meeting with them about some additional possibilities. And goal number three has to do with community engagement and, and partnerships and a need was, was identified of people who are very interested in, in becoming naturalists, in supporting our various entities in the gorge that work in stewardship of our nature, our natural spaces and, and in environmental education. So the Master Naturalist Program was one that seemed a very good fit and had, this year, we'll be bringing that field course back to the gorge. In fact, starting our first session, virtual session on, on Sunday and then first field based session will be the following Saturday. You can scroll down. I mentioned the HUNTOS program before. HUNTOS is coordinated by Andrea Flores. She is right there for you and not available today because she is leading, working with the school district and leading a family night that is on, this is virtual, as all of us this year have been virtual in, in most everything we've been able to do. She works closely with the migrant ed program through the Hood River Schools and also in Wasco County, where she helps to coordinate a club at Hood River Valley High School, Aguilas Unidas, that's Eagles United. And they've been meeting virtually. And also, you can scroll down just a little bit further. She meets individually with a number of students virtually to support them in their path to college. And I, she also, so you can see there, just a little sample of a workshop that she did along with the counselors at the high school, talking about scholarships and financial aid and all of those things. She also, there another workshop that was done around careers and graduation and that was bilingual with, at Hood River. And I think in, yes, in conjunction with Wasco County and a really exciting event that she has been working on with the HUNTOS statewide coordinators from across the state. Every other year, we have taken families to OSU. Bust loads have gone from Hood River and Wasco Counties to a family day that was, has, has traditionally been a really grand event with tours and families there with all, as you can see, the all age, all ages of the family members able to see a college campus, possibly for the first time and connect with student services folks as well as different professionals and from all of the different colleges that are, and, and really get a feel for what university, a university is, is all about and, and all the potential. So we're going to be offering that virtually this year and have a full, a full morning planned for folks. In fact, if they attend, one of the, the great things that we've always done on campuses, they have a nice meal, lunch that's provided. And so they're even providing a lunch voucher for those who come to the virtual presentation. We're taking registrations for that and you can see that registration link there, the B E A V dot E S. And that link would, would allow someone to go ahead and register for that date, which is open through until April 22nd. So coming up soon is the deadline for registration on that should be a really great event. You can scroll down a little further. And I was talking with you about the Master Naturalist Program. This course has been taught and continuing to be taught by a, a number of amazing current retired and current natural resource professionals. And the really great thing about the partnership is that those folks, they're working for organizations like the Hood River County Soil and Water Conservation District and the Discovery Center and the Gorge Ecology Institute. So the volunteers connect with those professionals and learn about those programs while building their skills and really just gleaning six full field days worth of knowledge about our beautiful gorge, which then they are obligated to give back hours. And that's one of the really key things about most of our extension programs is that we really leverage, we train and support and, and leverage those volunteer, the forces of, of volunteers of, in our community to really extend our reach quite a bit. So you can scroll down further and I'm wondering if Glenn Arons is onboard, our county forester.
There he is. I am here, yeah, reporting from the basement. Hello, everyone. Good to be here. Yeah, just briefly about forestry, natural resources. So I'm your Extension Forester, I cover Hood River, Clackamas and Marion County. And our main audiences are private family forest owners and also natural resource professionals that we help, you know, answer questions or address issues related to trees and forests, you know, for anyone. Our current programs with the COVID and a lot of the online and remote teaching emphasis, our tree school, we converted to an online system. And so we have, I think we've had 45 tree school classes since COVID started. They're currently going on the first, third Tuesday of every month through June. Actually tomorrow, it's gonna be a forest genetics professor talking about trees on the move and, and what to plant with the future climate in mind. And another class that we, we teach every year is basically the management class for landowners, which we did as a virtual session in February, March. Of course, wildfire awareness and wildfire preparedness is a major emphasis, especially after last year's fire season. And we're teaming up with our statewide fire program and offering wildfire Wednesdays, which have been every other Wednesday this spring. And, and I should say, all these online programs are recorded and you can find them on our website and there's a YouTube channel that has all these sessions. And we're finding that we get about three times as many views of the recorded session as we get with the folks that join live sessions online. So that's a good, long-lasting resource. Also, we, last year teamed up with, with Anne Harris and, and others and did a land stewards program as a pilot program, as a virtual program, which covered both forestry and agriculture and water and other natural resources for private landowners. And I have to say, the individual consultations, phone calls, emails, field visits are a major way to, you know, interact with and help people answer their questions on the ground. So I'm available to do those. The forest health and fire, I should say, are the top problems, the kind, you know, what's killing the trees, the bark beetle outbreaks that have been coming and going lately, killing our pine trees. So addressing those emerging issues like forest health and increasing fire hazards as well as your basic, the management topics like planting and bedding and harvesting and marketing, that's basically what, what I handle. So that's it in brief.
Thanks so much, Glenn.
You're welcome.
And I know that we have Lauren onboard to share about her programs in lifelong health and wellbeing.
Thanks, Anne. Hi, everyone. Thanks again for having us. So in a normal year, I would have been working on what I like to call anything health and wellness related. And of course, when COVID initiated, that changed a lot of what we were doing, as I'm sure with everyone. So one of my big roles early on was working with our county EOC and helping to support migrant and seasonal farm workers. Anne mentioned some research that Ashley and I have been doing with the local farmer and orchardist community to understand what went well in the COVID response last year in terms of supports provided, PPE, education and communication and resources. And we're using that to improve our support and outreach and education this year. We're also working on, as many of my colleagues have done, shifting programs to Zoom and online and other virtual formats. So pictured here is Anne Dow. She is a local strong women leader for the Mount Hood Parkdale region and she's got a crew of folks joining her from across the gorge and even some folks from all over the country who call in and participate with her every week. So that's an example of one of our ongoing programs that's continued just in a different way due to the pandemic. In non-COVID years, I would have been teaching some food preservation and community cooking and nutrition classes and those will be on hold for probably quite a while longer. It'll be some time before folks feel like they can eat and share food in a communal space, I think, for a little bit. And we have been doing some other cool things with gardening. There's a statewide Grow This campaign. So we've got seed kits that went out to 45 Hood River households and a bunch of early education kiddos through the Oregon Child Development Coalition and Head Start. So they're growing seedlings and learning about healthy foods and healthy eating that way. And I get to work with many of you in the various coalitions and community collaborations that I participate in, basically centered around healthy eating or active living or some built environment things to improve health. And then I'll just touch briefly on some of the other COVID supports and prevention, if you don't mind scrolling one more, Arthur. So I mentioned a little bit of the education and outreach. A couple of the flyers and PSAs that our team developed are pictured here. I want to point out the high-speed hand washing. This was a method that we had been utilizing in elementary school classrooms to get kiddos' hands washed when we were going in to do nutrition or food demos. So we'd line up all the kids and get 30 second graders to wash their hands in about three minutes. And so I was aware of this method and worked with our team on campus to modify it for use in the agricultural setting. So you can see, we pictured the little characters there, six feet apart with masks. So you can see, we pictured the little characters there, six feet apart with masks on. And I'm working next week with a team of folks to film an actual training video. We have a little more leeway this year with being in person for some education work. So we'll be at Clint Orchards doing some filming that we'll then be able to share out in a one minute training video for orchardists and packing houses. And this will be a statewide, basically hand washing, hand hygiene campaign that will be shared across Oregon and wherever else folks can use it. And I think that's pretty much it for my end. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren. And of course, on our campus, we have our Mid Columbia Extension Research Center. And Steve Casanoli is here to share just a little bit with y'all.
Yeah, hello, everybody. Yeah, the Mid Columbia Agricultural Research and Extension Center is one of 11 branch experiment stations that's affiliated with the OSU College of Agricultural Sciences. Our primary focus is research, although our faculty do a fair amount of outreach and may teach an occasional guest lecture or course at OSU, as well as serving as advisors for undergraduate and graduate students. As with other OSU branch stations, our research focus is on predominant local cropping systems. So for us, those are pear and sweet cherry production. Our our base funding does come through the College of Ag Sciences. Most of that is from the state of Oregon as part of the statewide's budget, but there's also a portion from federal sources. Additional support comes in the form of competitive grants from local and regional industry groups. So the Columbia Gorge Fruit Growers, Oregon Sweet Cherry Commission, Washington Tree Fruit Research Commission, to name a few. Our researchers also seek state and federal competitive grants. And although we don't receive financial support from Hood River County, the county does provide the buildings as well as much of the land here through a no cost lease. So thank you very much for that. I think you can scroll down to the next slide. Thanks. In total, the facility here is about 56 acres. That includes research orchards, greenhouses, cold storage facilities, as well as laboratories and office space housing our personnel. And our research programs are led by OSU faculty. And in recent past, those have focused on three primary aspects of pear and sweet cherry production. So first is horticulture, the nuts and bolts of fruit production. So things like fruit varieties, rootstocks, training systems, et cetera. Entomology, which is the management of insect and mite pests, which is a really important program for tree fruit production. And last but not least, post harvest physiology and handling, which is an area that has always been important for pears, but more recently for cherries, as well as growers look to export markets for a relatively perishable crop. You might be aware that starting about five years ago, yeah, I'm still on that slide. Thanks. About five years ago, we had a lot of turnover and personnel here. And we've been in a rebuilding mode for much of the last four years. I'm happy to say that within the last year and a half, we've hired new scientists to lead our horticulture as well as our entomology programs. And another significant, excuse me, another significant development is that we obtained federal funding to establish some USDA led research programs here a little more than a year ago. We're currently refurbishing one of the buildings here that will provide lab and office space for the USDA personnel. So in the very near future, the post harvest physiology program will be transitioning from an OSU led program to a USDA program. We're currently working on another request to fully fund a second program. And I anticipate bringing back a fruit pathology program that has been dormant for about 10 years. I think that's all I had for you. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve, and thank you to you all. We, that's all we have in our presentation, but we welcome any questions that you might have.
Any questions, board members?
Oh, this is Les. I was just curious what your outlook is on funding. So looking to this biennium, how's it looking for you guys?
Well.
Glenn, if you want, I can, I can get into that a little bit.
So here's Nicole Strong, our regional director, to share a little bit about that.
Hi, everybody. First, I just want to thank our staff. They have worked so tirelessly through COVID and through fire season to support the community. And their nimble response has been really impressive. So I hope you you see that as well. We are making a request for continued service level funding less at the statewide biennium. And we had District Two. We've had some opportunities for testimony, stakeholder testimony and written and oral support from our stakeholders, which has been been great. And that just lets us stay limping, not quite limping along, but doesn't doesn't help us fill a lot of the vacancies we have across the state. We're gonna need some some bigger increases beyond CSL for for that to happen. We did have, we were anticipating a greater cut last year than we ended up getting, partially because of all the great public support we received, really helped helped our cause. So we're looking at continued service level at this point, which kind of flat funds us.
Any other questions? Well, I want to thank Anne and the whole core of extension people for coming on today. We really appreciate it. Anne, thank you so much and all the group from working through the difficult times we've had the last few years, particularly this last year, and then the financial situations prior to that. And we're glad you've made it through and you're still here because you're an important part of our county. And I really appreciate, we all appreciate everything you guys do. So thanks again and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's time we're going to go move to our COVID-19 update health department. Trish.
Good afternoon. I'm gonna see if I can share my screen here. See if I can get to where I want to go. I apologize. Jeff, is Lynetta there? Is, can I forward her something? Okay.
Yep. Is it the PowerPoint?
Yeah, but I've updated it. Let me send it to you again. There you go. Thank you. Just thought you might. And I did forward this to you, to you. So you would have it, but I apologize. I wanted to wait and and see some of the state reporting numbers that were coming out today before I sent it.
All right, let me see if I can do the share screen. And it didn't share the right screen.
Yeah, it's there. If you just want to hit the presentation button, it should show a full screen. Slideshow.
Okay, are you seeing it? I know, I know Jeff is because it's not showing on the projector screen over here.
Okay. Can everyone else see it? Okay. If you want to hit the slideshow button at the top, it'll show the slides in full view.
I would, but I have five monitors to control and it's showing on three of them. I don't know what you're seeing.
Okay. So can you go to the the second slide?
Is that it?
No. Okay, well, you try this. I don't want to hold everything up. I'm gonna try to, okay. Well, I will just talk us through the slides and then you can, you'll be able to see them. Find it here. Okay, so I just wanted to go over some of the news that's been happening around the state in this past couple of weeks around COVID. As you all know, the Johnson and Johnson vaccine was paused by the FDA and the CDC because of concerns over similar reactions to the AstraZeneca vaccine in Europe. And that is some blood clotting and along with some thrombocytopenia, which actually creates further complications with with clotting. So the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices is going to be meeting on Friday. This is a federal, federal committee that that looks at safety and vaccines. And they're reviewing all of the data around the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. And folks from Oregon Health Authority are pretty sure that they'll be lifting the pause on the Johnson and Johnson. They may be adding some precautionary language to the vaccine around use in people who are more at risk for strokes or blood clot disorders than other people. But I fully expect that hopefully by next week, we'll be able to be providing a Johnson and Johnson vaccine again. So statewide, the numbers, oh, well, I was going to say the numbers are on your screen there, but they're not. So so far in the state of Oregon, about a million people, just a little more than a million people have completed their series of vaccine. And whether that's a one dose series or two vex, two dose series, that's irrelevant. They're done with the vaccine. There's about a half a million, just a little bit more than half a million people that are, have started vaccinating or and are still in in process there. Hood River County, we have, as of this morning, 1,128 cases of COVID. That's pandemic total. We've had 36 hospitalizations and 31 deaths. Looking, the next couple of slides that I had prepared, we're just looking at our trending, our trending with our cases in the in the past few weeks. And it basically shows that our numbers are increasing. They're doubling and sometimes a little more than doubling over the previous previous couple of weeks. So if you can go to one more, one more there. So these are our case totals for the three previous weeks that you see here. And you can see our numbers are going up. This week is a movement week as far as risk categories. And I would assume that we'll be moving to a moderate risk after this week. The next slide just shows our, our weekly totals, but back through January 1st. And as you can see, it looks like we're headed back up in the same direction. I'm really hopeful that we'll be able to not reach that peak that we reached before. Oregon Health Authority has done some, some modeling that shows that the current, what they call is a probable surge, will be peaking the first or second weeks in May. The next slide just shows you that we are in, in the green here for this week. Starting Friday, we may be in the yellow. Now, I know that Oregon Health Authority has, is adding a hospitalization metric to, to the county risk levels. And I'm not certain how that's going to affect, but we certainly have more than 30, 30 cases this, this past week. So we'll see. The next slide. So this is where we're at with our vaccine supply. And if you remember, a few weeks ago, we were really concerned about the fact that we weren't getting much vaccine. Well, we don't need to worry about that right now. So right now, we have about 2,200 doses of Moderna vaccine. And we are still continuing to hold our Johnson and Johnson vaccine. We're, like I said earlier, we're really hoping that we get to resume vaccinating with that, that, that vaccine. We have about 1,200 doses. And then we also today just received our first tray of Pfizer doses, which is 1,170 vials of vaccine. So we're going to take advantage of that Pfizer vaccine. We're sharing it with our community partners. We're making sure that the one community health has it for the school based health center. They're going to be doing a couple of targeted vaccine clinics for teens and their families at the end of the month. Providence Internal Medicine and Providence Family Planning Clinic are planning on providing vaccine as well. And we're sharing about 55% of our box with North Central Public Health District to be able to vaccinate the rest of our, of Region Six. So Wasco, Sherman and Gillum Counties as well. So we're hoping that we see a big demand from workforce. Folks, as you know, everybody over the age of 16 in Oregon is now eligible for a vaccine. So we're really hoping they show up. And next slide. These are the vaccines that we've given. And as you can see, we have given a total, not we, the county has given, the providers in the county have given 17,442 doses in Hood River County. 8,479 of those doses are two, two dose series. So we've got, got a lot of people vaccinated. If you aren't aware, let's go to the next slide. This is really hard to see. I'm sorry that it's so small. But this is how we're ranked in the state by age group. And for the 20 plus year olds, Hood River County is rated number one, is the highest percentage of that population vaccinated in the state. Age 40 to 64, we're number two. And for those 65 and over, we're number six. Overall, Hood River County is second in percentage countywide. second in percentage countywide, uh, in the state. So I feel like we've done a really good job and our partners have really helped us out here. Next slide, please. So looking forward, um, these are just some of the things that we're gonna do. We're gonna continue with what we're doing, offering, uh, big, uh, medium and large, um, clinics, uh, as long as we can fill them. Um, and then, uh, we're also continuing to provide vaccine, uh, and other supports, um, including, volunteers to other providers. Uh, but we're also going to start providing vaccine services, um, at our clinic, uh, by appointment. Um, and the idea is to be able to do smaller numbers of people at a time because what our partners are telling us is they're having trouble filling their clinics, uh, right now. So, uh, next slide. And these are the, um, some of the outreach activities that we're involved with. Uh, lots of, uh, social media, public service announcements. We use, um, radio and print, um, and then, uh, vaccine information distributed through employers. We have a lot of employers that we just keep on. We have an email list that we continue to provide, uh, information for. Uh, we're using, um, the school-based health center and also the health media clubs, um, at the, at the high school to help get information out to teens. Um, Heart of Hospice has been doing lots of work, um, and talking to their clients and their staff. And then targeted Spanish-language outreach includes, um, work with our partnering, partnering, um, agencies, um, that specialize in, um, this kind of outreach and they're providing, um, visitation to farms and orchards. Uh, Radio Tierra is quite, um, quite a, uh, useful realm. Um, we're providing flyers distributed to the community and, uh, grocery stores and, um, laundromats and then of course, more social media. Okay, I think that's, um, and, uh, finally, um, I would like to, um, express sincere appreciation for the hundreds of volunteers that have stepped up to help us, um, in this huge endeavor. As of last Friday, uh, there were 668 registered volunteers from our communities, um, and beyond. Uh, we've had, uh, volunteers come from Portland, from Vancouver. We've had, um, people come from all over the gorge, uh, and we are just really, really thankful, uh, to have that continued presence to help us and, uh, we couldn't do it without them. So this is, uh, National Volunteer Week and I would just like to, um, acknowledge, um, that we couldn't do it without, without our volunteers and people who give their time and their energy, um, so selflessly. So. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions, Board?
I have one question about, um, about the clinics, I guess. I was involved in a, and just getting people to them. I was involved in one that Duckwall put on, uh, with One Community Health. And I did a couple with, with Duckwall and they've both been good, but the second one, uh, One Community Health, like posted the info that, that it was gonna happen on social media and it kinda turned into a bit of a circus, but I know the one thing they didn't have an issue with was people showing up because there was a huge line,
Right.
folks that were there. Um, is that, does, do we have the ability to, uh, do that or is that just gonna, are we worried about getting overwhelmed? What's the, kind of the plan, I guess, moving forward if we're having trouble filling clinics? Cause it seems like there's still demand out there.
Well, um, we, I'm sure there are, is demand and it's gonna change over time. I mean, we, we've had people, um, that we've talked to that have declined the vaccine and just wanted to wait and see, you know, how other people did with it and what the, the word on the street was. And then they'll decide to do it. So it might take people a few weeks or even a couple of months to decide that they really wanna get the vaccine and we wanna be available and accessible to them in that case. Um, we have opened, uh, we, um, have opened up our next, um, one or maybe two clinics for, um, for appointments. Uh, we're doing a thousand doses. We're hoping to do a thousand doses on this Thursday at River of Life, um, Assembly and we've opened, um, scheduling for that, but, um, as with our last clinic that we did at the fairgrounds, we're going to be anticipating that there'll be people show up that don't have appointments and we'll be able to accommodate them as well. So we're trying to make it easy. Um, you know, we're, we're concerned and we're, you know, we'll, we're keeping an eye on, um, on the schedule to make sure that it does fill adequately. We don't wanna, you know, if we need to make, um, changes last minute to make it more, uh, size, you know, to size it better, um, then we can do that, but, um, we're ready for a full-on clinic with, for a thousand doses. We're just hoping we get that many.
And if I could add to that, oh, excuse me. I just was gonna add to what Trish said. Um, I think, Commissioner Benton, I think what you're saying is true. There, so much seems like it's changed in the last few weeks, not only with the pause, but also prior to that. All four pharmacies now are offering vaccine. There's just a lot more options for places that people can go who are interested in getting a vaccine. So I think that I've seen the switch really just lately to being where we're having trouble filling clinics. And when I talk to the pharmacies and to One Community Health, it seems like they're having a similar, they're getting to that similar point. And so I hope that we're meeting the demand, is what I'm finding.
Yeah, and I apologize. I guess that was two weeks ago. So, um, a lot of stuff's changed in the last two weeks. A lot of people have got a shot.
Yeah, yeah. I, um, you know, we, we wanna be here and wanna provide that vaccine for everybody and anybody that wants it, who's eligible. But, uh, we certainly recognize that, you know, we'll, we'll see more, uh, seasonal workers come in later in the, in the year, in the spring and, well, you know, people will be deciding, um, maybe later that they would prefer to have it. So we're gonna, we're gonna maintain, um, an inventory of vaccine and our plan, our plan is to continue to vaccinate people, um, as long as they'll, they'll take it. I think this'll eventually become just something that we work into our, um, our daily schedule, providing vaccines.
Trish, Darren, is there anything else you wanted to add? You didn't get a chance to speak yet.
Oh, thank you. I think, um, what Trish just said is something I had wanted to add to the presentation is that we know things will ebb and flow as, as we do get new folks coming to the area to work. So I think, um, I'm, I'm really invested in making sure that our Spanish-language outreach stays strong because I think there will continue to be a need and making sure that people who are coming, who haven't been vaccinated yet. So, even though it may be a bit of a dip now, I think it's good for us, as Trish has been saying, to keep the vaccine so that we can meet the need as it changes.
Thank you. Dr. Van Tilburg, anything you wanted to add?
Well, sorry I came in late. Um, I'm in the office today, but I probably just mentioned that we, I, I think we're at about 14,000 people vaccinated in the county. So, which, and my goal, our goal was half the county, so we kinda reached it. So, the fact that we can't fill clinics is a good news. That means we vaccinated a lot of people. So, um, we got a little work to do, but, um, I think it's really good news that we have trouble filling clinics.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Uh, yes. Uh, I'm wondering, uh, how well do you folks think people understand that we're entering another surge? Is that news out there? And if so, do we expect that that will kinda wake people up and say, hey, maybe I should go and get this vaccine? Uh, any of that dynamic visible?
Uh, we've, I've, we've been getting more calls, uh, from, with questions from the community wanting to know why, you know, our numbers are up. Um, certainly anyone who watches, um, the news or reads the news, um, is that they're aware, is aware that there is a, is a surge happening not only here, but throughout, across the state and across the nation. Um, I, you know, I, we've put it out there. We talk about it a lot. Um, obviously, uh, we have a lot of residents who keep an eye on the, um, Oregon Health Authority dashboards, um, and, um, they call with, with questions often. So what we're seeing right now is, um, is a product of some large, uh, social gatherings.
Tricia, I understand that they're, they're going to start looking more for these metrics involving hospitalizations, which just seems to make common sense since we're getting so many people with vaccines now. Maybe, uh, getting the number of cases isn't the best way to figure out the metrics. Uh, when and how will that play out, you know?
You know, I thought it was gonna come into play this week, but I haven't, uh, all I've seen is our numbers. I haven't seen how they're interpreting them for this, this Friday yet. I expect that we'll see, uh, um, press release from, uh, Governor Brown's office. But I, and we have a call with Oregon Health Authority tomorrow, so I'm not, I'm not certain if they'll go over it. Maybe I should send an email asking them to please let me know how this, how this looks. I mean, we've had one hospitalization in the last month. The rest have been previous to that and, and so, um, yeah, I, I really don't, I really don't know because I haven't seen, um, a preview of how, how it's gonna look.
Okay. Well, I'm sure that's gonna be significant.
Yeah, I think I can just add, Commissioner Oates, I think that it might be, that might be a short-lived metric cause what we're seeing in the US and in the world is that this, uh, surge is, um, younger people, it's people that, um, are socializing heavily, that are less risk for getting ill. And so, um, you know, that metric is somewhat useful. It would've been more useful two months ago, but, um, I mean, we're gonna have a lot more cases. I'm not sure if tracking hospitalizations is gonna show the public that we're getting a surge of cases, but we'll see what the state does.
Okay. Any other questions by Commissioners?
I, I guess what I was getting is, I'm wondering if we're helping connect the dots for folks, that there is this surge coming and this is a great chance, a great opportunity to get your vaccination ahead of the surge. Uh, I, I mean, there's so many people watching the dashboard every day. Those people already have been vaccinated. It's the folks who haven't been that I'm wondering, ha- has the connection been made?
Um, well, I, you know, I feel like, I feel like, you know, s- some people doubt, um, you know, there's, there's people that, that just wanna wait and see. There's, there's a certain number of people that just aren't gonna take the vaccine and that's just how it's gonna be. Um, so, you know, I feel like, um, there's so much information out there that I don't, I don't know how people could, could miss, miss that. Um, we're pretty blunt with people when we're talking to them, when they, you know, about vaccine and about the, the disease and, and how you can help, curb the spread and, um, some people just don't wanna hear it. I, I, we still have people that refuse to quarantine or don't take it seriously or tell us that they're just not gonna do that. So, um,
Yeah, I think.
Not much we can do.
I think the more you, we, we, you gotta, it's a little delicate balance because the more we push, like, uh, Director Elliott said, the more we get a lot of pushback from the people who don't wanna get vaccinated and, um, probably the single most important thing going forward is the segregation that's just starting. So people are just starting to be segregated at workplaces, uh, between the vaccinated and the unvaccinated. And as we see more of that, or if we see restrictions in travel, if you're not vaccinated, that's probably gonna be the single most important thing that impacts, you know, number of people vaccinated, I suspect. But it's just starting.
I've got a question around that. Um, has OHA given, uh, guidelines and OSHA given guidelines about, so what I haven't seen as an employer is, uh, how you can actually segregate, segregate between vaccinated and unvaccinated, uh, because all I've seen is that the guidelines are the same, uh, when you're working in an office space, that you're basically masked in common areas.
We did get a, a dra- draft language last week of, um, talking about how employers, there has to be, um, some legal changes, it sounds like, to be able to, um, require that, um, that information be passed on to, to employers. Um, so, I'm, I'm not sure.
OSHA, right.
Yeah, and, yeah, and I don't know where that's gonna, how that's gonna come about or if it will come about, but I do know that that has been, has been raised. I know, I, I think a lot of people are gonna, um, wanna fight that because a lot of people view their, uh, medical history as private, of, of course. And, um, so, you know, I, I, I think if we look at it, um, as the medical providers, you know, require their staff to get flu shot every year or they have to take special precautions, wear masks. Of course, everyone's married, wearing masks now. Um, but there has been a lot of pressure for a lot of years for the medical professionals to get vaccinated against flu and, um, that still hasn't been made, um, mandatory. Some, some employers may require that, but it's not mandatory by the state. So, I, I don't know where, what's, what'll become of that.
Okay. Well, thank you, everyone. Uh, we've reached our time in the evening's program where we need to switch gears and wanna thank, uh, Trish and Dr. Van Tilburg and Darren for all the work you've done and the, uh, the process that we did out at Y East was pretty amazing. Just incredible how that happened. I wanna thank Karen for all those months of pushing us to make sure we were getting ready for those big, big vaccination processes, cause we're there, we're doing it.
Yeah, and it's almost like be careful what you wish for, cause we asked for a lot of vaccine from the state and guess what? They gave us a lot of vaccine. So, now we're, now we're sitting good, so.
It's really fun seeing those numbers every week and seeing us, uh, being, you know, up in top of the state in terms of vaccination rates. So, really, really nice work.
Yeah, thanks.
So thank you, everyone. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move on to our next, uh, agenda item, which is county zoning ordinance amendments concerning permit timelines and extensions. Eric, I believe you're up.
Uh, Commissioner Babbitt's fell off. He's gonna rejoin. He just sent me a message, so. I don't know if you wanna wait or get going, but he says he's gonna reconnect.
Are you ready, Arthur?
I am. Uh, I thought my computer was acting a little strange and it finally just froze up and forced me to reboot. Sorry about that.
Okay, well, you're pretty quick. Okay, Eric, we're ready.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. As noted, we're here tonight to consider draft modifications to various sections of the county zoning ordinance related to permit approval periods and extensions. Uh, the primary purposes of these changes are to provide greater clarity and certainty to permit applicants and others when it comes to issuing permits, including the timeframes with which they will remain valid. As a bit of background, the current ordinance provisions concerning approval permits, uh, approval periods and, and extension periods were adopted back in 2016. Uh, however, almost immediately after being adopted, these portions related to permit extensions were the source of contention, uh, related to a particular application and three appeals followed, which have highlighted certain discrepancies with some of the current criteria. Over the last year, both the Planning Commission and the Board has suggested to staff that, uh, ordinance changes be, be made, uh, to address these concerns. And so here we are. The text changes proposed and included in your packets were initially brought before the Planning Commission. The text changes proposed and included in your packets were initially brought before the Planning Commission last August during a work session. Planning Commission then held a public hearing in March to consider final version of the draft ordinances and to provide opportunities for public input. In the end, the topic generated good discussion and has resulted in a solid recommendation to the Board to consider for adoption. So there are six primary changes to the zoning ordinance that are being recommended for your consideration tonight, which I will detail shortly. But before getting started, there is one distinction that I think is important to help the to help frame discussions a bit. And that is that the state has guidelines that apply to farm and forest zone property and that they are mandated when it comes to, one, the initial approval period, and then, two, in the the initial extension period. So because those are mandated by the state, the county has no jurisdiction or discretion with which to make changes to those to those two areas. The county does, however, have the authority to to modify additional extensions that would apply in a farm and forest zone or or extension periods and timeframes of all in all other zones, so residential, commercial, and industrial zones. We have full discretion to dictate timeframes and extension periods. So with that said, the first proposed amendment would be to, one, limit the number of additional extensions, those beyond the first, in the farm and forest zones, but to but to two, but to no more than two one-year approval periods. In this case, the Planning Commission is recommending this amendment in order to provide greater consistency with the timelines proposed in other zones. Two, within all the other zones, again, where the county has has full discretion, the Planning Commission is recommending an initial four-year approval period be provided for all application types, which is twice as long as what is allowed under the current ordinance. In this case, the Planning Commission wanted to provide a reasonable timeframe for a property owner to complete a project while limiting the number of opportunities for appeal. So with the extended approval period of four years, the Planning Commission is also recommending that the number of extensions outside of the farm and forest zone be limited to just one. But if approved, it would be good for two years. And so the the total timeframe would be six years for the four-year, the initial four-year approval period and then the two-year extension period. The current system allows the potential for an unlimited number of extensions that are valid for just one year. The Planning Commission is also recommending applications for an extension be subject to discretionary standards, but be subject to a modified type one minister review, which would include notice of the decision to adjacent property owners, to affected public agencies and others, and with the possibility of an appeal. The Planning Commission agrees that subjecting a property owner to a long process to extend a permit is unnecessary, especially when state statute provides an alternative way to provide man to provide for mandatory notification and opportunity for appeal, but through a more expeditious process. Four, the Planning Commission is suggesting language that would clarify that in the case of an appeal, the approval period would not begin until the appeal process has been completed. And so this change is intended to address the whole Apollo landholding thrive situation where where the amount of time it takes to get through the appeal process, especially those going to Luba, can take longer than the extension period itself, which is which then prevents reasonable completion of the project within the approval period. Fifth, the Planning Commission is recommending criteria that clarifies how a permit is maintained or kept valid after the initial or extended approval period expires, depending on if the permit involves a use that requires a building permit or not. And so so in the case of a use involving a building permit, the new language clarifies that to keep their permit valid, the applicant must first meet the conditions of their permit. They must complete and submit a building permit application for review. They need to be issued a building permit, and then they need to maintain the permit timelines of the building code. And this is the process essentially that we use today. And so it it addresses the question of, if my permit is good for four years, then what do I have to do within that four-year period? Do I just have to get a building permit? Or does it mean I actually have to complete the project within that timeframe? And so these changes will hopefully clarify will answer those questions. And in the case of a project not involving a building permit, the applicant would again need to meet the conditions of their permit. But then they would actually have to establish the the use by initiating activities authorized under the permit in order to keep it valid. Finally, number six, the Planning Commission is recommending various changes to other sections of the zoning ordinance, such as those related to land divisions, property line adjustments, and bed and breakfast facilities to make approval period, timeline, extension periods, and review procedures consistent with the other sections of the zoning code, essentially make everything match as much as possible. And so in a nutshell, those are the primary changes proposed. Overall, staff finds that they reflect an overall improvement of the existing code. They provide greater consistency and clarity where able and hopefully address the discrepancies that resulted in the recent appeals. So thanks for your time, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, Board?
I've got a quick, real question. I I would like to make a disclose a potential conflict of interest, but I don't know if this is the appropriate time or if we should wait until the meeting or if I should do it every time we discuss.
Commissioner Benton, I can probably take that one for you. Yeah, thanks for thanks for raising that. The the best the best approach would be to do it before now, so this is perfect. And then again, as you have your readings, so before the first and second reading.
Okay, well, with that, on the advice of legal counsel and an abundance of caution, I note that I may have a potential conflict of interest relative to the Board's consideration of the ordinance amendments concerning permit, timeline, and extension. This potential conflict is based upon my membership in Apollo Landholdings, the extensions that have been granted for the amphitheater approval and any effect these amendments may have on such extensions.
Thank you, Commissioner Benton. If there's questions on that, I'm happy to happy to weigh in.
So David, you're saying every time we come up for this reading, the next couple of meetings, he should do that at the beginning of those as well?
Yes, and just to just to be clear, I I talked a little bit about this with Eric earlier today. You know, my view on this is that Commissioner Benton does not have a conflict here, but it's it's one of these abundance of cautions issues. And so to the extent there is anything, it's just potential based on the extensions that Apollo has had. And a couple of those are pending right now. So it's a kind of a belt and suspenders approach. But the the way that the state has looked at this in the past is yes, each time the issue comes up, the the declaration of the potential conflict should be should be raised. So he's handling it perfectly right now, and I would just suggest he continue to do that before each reading.
Just so I understand, so so this is a potential conflict, which means that Commissioner Benton is not refusing himself? Did am I getting this right?
Okay. That's that's correct. Yes.
Thank you. I have a question for Eric. Eric, were there any dissenting views on the Planning Commission when this was discussed?
There was one dissenting view. One of the commissioners, one of the recommendations is that there be granted a an initial four-year approval period for things outside the farm and forest zone and that there be a two-year extension, a one-time two-year extension. And that extension would be subject to a discretionary review. And so the one commissioner, he was supportive of the the recommendations, but he 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 wanted the the one-time two-year review to be a ministerial non-discretionary review instead of a discretionary review. And his purpose was, I think he was trying to benefit the the department mostly by saying if if we do it through a a non-discretionary review, then there's really no viable opportunity for appeal. And so that was his justification. But the the majority or the the rest of the commissioners thought a discretionary review was more appropriate.
Thank you.
So I I guess what I would bring up, just having gone through this this process, I guess, still being somewhat in the middle of it, is I, you know, I really appreciate all the work that's been done. This makes our code much cleaner, in my opinion, and much more understandable. And from an applicant's perspective, I think that you it it's it's more fair. I had to, you know, describe it sets you up better for success after you apply for doing a doesn't necessarily help the position that I'm in, but which is good, I think. But anyway, I but the concern, I do have some concerns. I would agree with the the dissent that I think that it makes it would it would be cleaner to have there be a two-year extension that's approved. And I also have concerns about there being a six, a six-year cap. Not because I don't think virtually all projects should be able to done by be done by then. But I think that for us to anticipate that we we will figure out all the scenarios that could possibly exist out there. I I think that's unfair to an applicant. And I think that what I would recommend is doing the only change that I think I well, the two changes I would make are, one, for the rural, residential, commercial, and industrial zones, make that initial extension two years. It's not that isn't a discretionary decision. And then also leave the unlimited one-year discretionary extensions in there. And at that point, you know, the decision of the Planning Commission. But I think to for us to say that we know, you know, just put six years on, I have concerns about limiting it, I guess, from from its current stage of being unlimited. I I understand the concerns, but I I think there's value in that from an applicant perspective. I guess I just want to know what other commissioners think about that.
Eric, this is Karen. I reviewed in our packet, the conversation that took place in the Planning Commission. And what struck me was that there really was not a lot of discussion, it appeared, and maybe you can help me and tell me differently, around what often causes some of the delays in getting a project started and what often causes a developer to request an extension. And my concern is that I'm wondering if everyone on part of this discussion really understands the significant delays that occur in the construction permitting process. The county is only one permit that a developer needs to obtain. And from personal experience, it took me 14 months to get a permit to put a driveway onto Tucker Road from ODOT. It's not that many of these developers are sitting on their hands and out fishing. There's significant delays that are outside of their control. And I just wonder if there was ample discussion and understanding around some of those elements.
Well, you you read the transcript, and I would I would agree that there wasn't a lot of discussion about the the reasons why people ask for an extension. There may have been a little bit more discussion as part of the work session. I can't really remember. But I would agree that, you know, a lot of the extensions are the result of, in certain circumstances, the requirements of the permit. In other circumstances, it may be an issue where you have a property owner who is just determining if if they can use their land in a in a certain way. And then if they if they can, then they may decide to sell the property, which takes some time. In other situations, people are just making sure that they can do it, and and their circumstances may change, whether that be financial or, you know, family matters may come up. So I mean, I think it's across the board as far as what the reasons reasons are. But I think you speak to the fact that, yeah, some of those could be the result of permit conditions. Certainly, that's the case in some of the more involved applications, for sure.
Especially when it comes to some of the conditions placed upon a conditional use permit. Some of those conditions require environmental studies, traffic studies, all kinds of different studies that not only cost a significant amount of money, they can take a lot of time, as Les can attend to with some of the permits he has put in for for some of the farmers irrigation projects. So my I'm concerned that there's not a solid understanding about why projects often take a long time to come to fruition. Through the discussions that I've listened to through all of this process and the example that was put into play with the Apollo landholdings, it's it's more, I feel, an attempt to logger jam the applicant's ability to complete the project rather than to keep timely process and timely due diligent work towards getting it done. It seems agenda-driven. I'll support the recommendation from the Planning Commission as it's crafted. But I I feel like this is still agenda-driven to prevent developments, knowing that construction processes take a significant amount of time. And again, it's not that developers are just sitting around wasting their time, not trying to get projects going, which has been often insinuated in this whole discussion.
I I'm kind of wondering, I to to just extend that discussion a little bit. I I see that there are two major classifications of delays other than someone sitting on their hands. One is just the the things built into the process, which can take, you know, months to years, depending on on which process you're going through. And then there's appeals and challenges, which can basically take a project off the rails. The way that I viewed it was that the number of years calibrated into these extensions should be a number which is suitable to deal with the 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 issues which are internal to our system with the with the amounts of amount of time it can take to run through the processes. But then I see that there's no way that we can build into those numbers, the 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 appeals processes. And I'm wondering if, to address that, whether there's a possibility of inserting into this some tolling of the clock or some other structure. I don't, I'm obviously I'm not the lawyer. So but is is there some way to to address appeals by turning a clock off while an appeal is in process?
Well, Commissioner Babbitt, I think that is addressed in the in the criteria. One of the standards that are that's proposed essentially says that 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 the approval period does not begin until the appeal process has completed its course. And so that that hopefully eliminates the the situation that Apollo got to got into where you had that overlap between the approval period and the the appeal period. The appeal period running while the approval approval period was was in process. And so the change that was proposed is is that if there's an appeal, the clock gets put on hold. And then the the four-year period or the two-year extension period does not start until that appeal period has been completed.
I apologize. I must have somehow missed this. Do you have, can you tell me the code section?
Sure. I mean, there's a there's a number of sections that that it's in, but we'll start with yeah, the first page. Under under section 1.130A at the bottom, it says, in the case of an appeal decision, the approval period shall begin on the date a final appellate decision is issued, unless the decision is remanded by the county, in which case the approval period shall begin on the date the county issued its final decision on remand.
Okay, thank you.
Just to comment on that, Eric, I thought that was that portion that was put in that was pretty significant. I mean, it it makes a big difference for me in looking forward. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, man, I would jump in on, you know, Karen's comments or when you have a wetland impact, you have a Clean Water Act impact, you know, addressing those issues can take two to three years. I mean, if you have to mitigate for any impact on wetlands, you have to find somewhere to mitigate. And in Hoodever County, that's almost impossible. So your your options are pretty limited, and it can greatly impact your your timeline. And so, you know, that can that can literally eat up two to three years of your of your timeline, just getting that resolved through Army Corps and DSL. So that that is a it's a real factor, and a lot of the properties we have left to be developed in the county have a wetland impact, and they're going to be the more difficult to develop sites. It's a reason that they're still sitting there undeveloped because there's some difficulties with them. So I think it's I think that is
So I think it's, I think that is a really important point, that that can, those permitting timelines can be really long. And you're really at the whim of, of a federal and state agency to get it through their own process.
So Eric, with that in mind, let's theorize that there's an applicant experiencing these types of delays and has come across a situation that they need to mitigate, or, God forbid, they find a bone and has to be evaluated if it's a native burial site or something. What would be the process if they bump up at the end of that four-year? Or they get their extension for the two-year and they're, can prove that there's this timeline of one requirement for an analysis or assessment after another, that they've not been just stagnant, not doing anything, that they've been relying on the process? Is there any recourse, or are they, as soon as they hit the end of that timeline, they'd be required to start over?
Yeah, so as, as the current recommendation is, you're given a maximum of six years. After that six-year period, then you would have to start over, start the process over.
So Commissioner Joplin, is your contention that it, that six years is simply not enough, given the number of things that can get in the way? Because you gave examples of things that could be 12, 14 months, 16 months, but we're talking six years here.
Well, I mean, I'll, I'll say, you can have an application. So you're basically developing a project, so you're, you're building your, your project, you're getting it through planning. A lot of the things that trigger pulling the permits that I'm talking about don't, don't happen right in the beginning. You have to be aways into the project before you even know what those impacts are going to be, and you even know what you're mitigating for. So sometimes you can be two years into your process before you even know what you've triggered. Then you have to design your mitigation, and so that can take another, so it really, you know, unless somebody starts the day that they get their, their approval and starts working through that process, you know, then, yeah, you should have enough time. But say you wait a year or two years for, you know, whatever reason, it just, that timeline's kind of unknown and a bit of a moving target until you're well into the process. So you're putting a lot of resources into a project as you're developing it, meeting your permit conditions and meeting your land use conditions. And you can be four years in and go, oh, crap, I've got this, something was triggered that is then, like Karen said, you find something, you know, significant archaeologically, whatever it happens to be. Yeah, they can just, it can, it can really derail your timeline.
But do you see a solution other than leaving it open-ended?
I mean, I don't know if you, if you had an exception for, you know, a federal or state permit timeline, you know, that, and I don't know how you would, I don't know how you would structure that. But I mean, that's really, really what I think is going to derail somebody, is going to be running into that state or federal timeline on the Clean Water Act or archaeological survey, or, you know, something in that, in that vein that is unforeseen in the beginning.
And each of those could have an appeals process also, right? So you could have a...
Yes, they have a public comment period and appeals, yeah.
Right, and so that's where I'm, kind of get back to the question of tolling the clock again, is, you know, if you wind up with an appeal that goes through federal courts on some water, water rights issue or clean water issue, that could be, you know, eight years, right?
Yeah, and I don't know if there's other counties that have, you know, dealt with that, or David, if you know, there's, there's ways that that's been dealt with. But it is, it's, it is one of those that is hard to see in the beginning of the process, so.
Arthur, I mean, to, to your question, I guess whenever I'm thinking about policy and creating policy that's going to live beyond all of us and be a part of decisions made, I think about intent for the policy. And what is our true intent here in limiting the amount of time available for an applicant to complete conditional use items for their permit? And what is our intent to make sure that it all happens inside six years? Is it to make sure that they're not sitting on their hands with this permit, that they could maybe sell with the property and make money on that? Is the intent to keep the ball rolling and not have people sitting around? Or, I mean, so I'm, I'm a little lost on the intent part. And then, but maybe, as far as resolution-based conversation, maybe there's something that could be added if an applicant had a conditional use item that they were addressing that was held up with some type of analysis or study or assessment that was required by another entity, and they bumped up onto that six-year mark. Maybe if there was proof that they had something in the works and they're waiting for a return that was outside of their control for a completed document, that that could be some type of exception to the...
Yeah.
...year mark, you're done, you got to start over.
So, yeah, I spent much, too much of my life on the Walmart process and the Walmart appeals, and that was a good example of a situation where, for all intents and purposes, I know it's not a perfect parallel, but for all intents and purposes, they did sit on their hands for almost 20 years. So I think that that, you know, to play devil's advocate, I think that that is the, that is what we're trying to address. And I think you can address that without doing it in such a way that it's clear that the intent is to, to benefit those who are trying to, to kill a project. I think there are legitimate reasons that you don't want to allow a project to hang open for an unlimited amount of time without, without advancing.
I would just say one thing, maybe in response to Commissioner Perkins's question. I don't, off the top of my head, you can't think of a, of an example that would tie directly to, let's say, a state or federal permit and the delay that might be associated with that. It's not to say that it couldn't be. And again, we're talking here about things that are going to be outside of resource zones, right? So things that are, you know, where the county does have that discretion. So that already kind of narrows it a little bit. But, you know, maybe one thing we could think about for those types of permits would be something that really gets to, what I'm hearing anyway, is sort of extraordinary circumstances. I mean, something that's really out of the ordinary, and that clearly would be outside of the applicant's control, right? Nothing that the applicant, it's not being dilatory, it's not, you know, you know, having a set of options to choose from, and we chose door A rather than door B, you know, but something that is sort of an external, unavoidable, if you will, you know, consequence. That's just me thinking out loud right now. Obviously, the, you know, we'd have to, you know, kind of give some thought to the, to how that would be expressed, and, you know, what the maybe downstream consequences would be. Because I think part of this exercise clearly has been to reduce the, yeah, come with the, the way that the county's zoning ordinance is written now for those types of permits, which just sort of allows a potentially never-ending, if you will, amount of extension. So there's a balance there somewhere. At least, that's what I understand the policy goal to be. I mean, and I, so I think you could, you know, have something, if that were the board's desire, that would, you know, maybe have a, a, I guess I'll let it call an extraordinary circumstances kind of exception, and maybe that would be subject to board approval, you know, something that would build it in so it's not routinely being authorized, but, but truly is serving that purpose.
I think of some of the language that we see in our variance code and things like that, where, you know, it's through no fault of your own. Because I certainly can imagine if someone's, if someone's been waiting eight years for a federal court to decide some, you know, some, some legal issue, which had to do with a federal permit that was required down the road on one of these projects, then, then clearly it doesn't seem reasonable for our clock to be running out. But in the, in the other cases, you know, six years is a good amount of time.
I agree, and I think that, I mean, I guess my concern would be that, you know, you have, you know, somebody who is using a backdoor approach to, to stop a project, you know, by appealing through a permit process, you know, and that's, I guess that's the, yeah, exactly what you're saying, that that's, that's kind of the thing that is beyond. So, yeah, those, I think that's the type of situation we'd want to address.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, that's the exact situation I foresaw as well, is, you know, you, there's a lot of ways to hold a project up outside of the land use process. And if you set a deadline on that, then those will be the avenues used to block projects, I think, or could be. And I'd like to avoid that. And so I think that, I think that, you know, I like, I would agree with most of the direction the conversation is, is going. And I would just share one story about a permit extension that I utilized when we, as part of basically family planning, we basically got a lot line adjustment approved. And then as we mediated over the, you know, four or five years following that, and we're able to extend that, have utilized that as part of the mediated settlement that could take place very rapidly. So instead of having to wait six months, you know, that could be done immediately as part of a mediated settlement in a ground, settlement in an estate. And so it was really useful from a practical standpoint, and something that wasn't even, that wasn't controversial at all. But it was just a, I think, a really good use of the, you know, when, when something just took longer, and it was something you wouldn't normally think about when you're, when you're deliberating over this. But, but it was really, it was really excellent and actually allowed the situation to come to settlement, which was cool. So, I mean, just kind of seeing how these extensions have worked in random circumstances nobody thinks about, I think that, I like to see flexibility in that. I would agree, the new language that's in here that allows for the clock not to start until the final appeal, and, and the broader windows of time should take care of almost, you know, almost all projects. And so I think it's great, and will greatly reduce the amount of time I'm hoping staff has to work on it. But just from the discussion today, I think that we need to leave it open-ended, even with sideboards, some way to leave it open-ended in some way.
Well, it, it might address the issue, or it might shift it, as you said earlier, it might shift it to a different game. You close one set of tactics, and you open a new set, which is find something that's outside of the land use approval process that involved an permit process instead.
Perhaps, I mean, so what would, I mean, I'm trying to think of the, the advantage of, of leaving it closed-ended. I just, I just don't see an advantage.
The problem with, the advantage is having a definite deadline.
Yeah.
From a public policy point of view, I think that land use entitlements should not be, should not be open-ended. It's simply, from a, 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 a community planning point of view, you're, you're leaving the right to do things in ways that, that the board of commissioners can't adjust open. I'm not sure if I'm making, making sense here, but...
No, you are. I guess I just mean...
We can be changing the code, year by year, we can be changing the code, and this, these code change, you'll have islands left out there that aren't subject to the code changes we've been making because they have entitlements which, which, which they can extend indefinitely. So I definitely have a problem with that.
Right, I guess I wasn't just saying indefinitely with no sideboards. I mean, I would just, I think that, that, you know, we just need to figure out a way to consider those circumstances, or those cases that, that we aren't thinking about right now.
So I guess the question is, is there, is there category other than these, you know, federal estate permitting issues? Is there a category that we haven't addressed that we want to ask staff to take a look at?
I don't, I don't know. So, I mean, you're, I think that that probably in cap, you know, if you're waiting on another agency, that should take care of just about, you know, once again, I guess I'm thinking of, I don't know. I don't know if just, you just say any of the, any of the, any of the conditions involving state or federal agencies, what are you, what are you thinking, Arthur?
I'm not trying to come up with the wording. I'm saying, with what I've heard in this conversation so far, we could say to staff, we would like you to go back and look at language which would address federal and state permitting, so that the clock doesn't expire in a ridiculously long federal or state permitting process. And that's great, we can be done with our discussion today and move on, but I want to know if we should be asking any other questions? Is that, have we covered it, or should we ask another question? That's what I'm asking.
I like that idea. I like the idea of taking a look at maybe other example language that may address extenuating circumstances, but yet with proven due diligence and process. And maybe process that the request comes directly to the board, or it's a case-by-case decision, or language around those extenuating circumstances that, some that we've discussed and others that we might not yet know of, but that an applicant may be faced with, and then also be faced with losing the process due to the timeline expiration from the county.
If it's helpful, I would just state that as part of the, the existing language in the extension section, it already talks about that the county determines that the applicant was unable to begin or continue development during the approval period for reasons for which the applicant was not responsible. And that language comes from the state, and so that language is already there. So I would agree that if you're looking for maybe a third option for those very rare circumstances that come in, I don't know that I would limit it to just a state or federal permit, because like you said, there may be other things that come up. But, but maybe, maybe the option is, is that under those extraordinary circumstances, a person may have the opportunity to come to the board or come to the planning commission for a hearing and to explain, and we can come up with some draft language, but I don't know that I'd like to restrict it just to federal state permits, because like you said, other things may come up that, in retrospect, we would have wished we would have thought of it at this point.
Eric, are you talking about the two-year extension language? Which, which example are you talking about now?
I guess what I'm thinking of is, we keep the language as it exists.
Which language, though?
Okay, so on page one of the draft ordinance, so we're keeping the four-year initial approval period. We're keeping the two-year discretionary extension language. And then I think you'd add a, an item C below that for a, you know, for a, an additional time extension subject to a public hearing based on, you know, some other extraordinary circumstances.
I guess the only change I would make, which I said initially, I think, is to make, I would agree with what you've said, Eric. I think that's a good approach. What I would, what I would change, though, or recommend changing, is making the first two-year extension non-discretionary, to allow for six years, similar to the EFU and forest land wellings, how they're set up. So that would be my, I don't know how anybody else feels about that. That would allow for six years, basically, and if you can't get it done, then you fall into the, the next part, which would be the...
Yeah. I personally, I prefer it the way that it is here. I like the idea that the vast majority of things should be doable in four years. Two-year extension is available, but there is some discretion involved in that. So I do appreciate, or I believe that the discretionary step is a sensible one.
But then, I guess that political, you know, to me, that politicizes that extension, and I'm trying to get away from much of that as possible, I think would be positive. And given that's how it's set up in several of the other zones, I don't see why we couldn't include that in this.
Why wouldn't it just be six years? Why wouldn't it just be an initial six-year period, rather than four-year plus a automatic two-year? What's the advantage to that, then?
I guess that if you didn't file an extension and didn't do the project, it would no longer be hanging around, kind of to your point of not having these, you know, not having things perpetually exist forever as a permit. You know, I mean, there's, I think there's value in, in having it not, you know, if it's not extended, it's no longer a viable project, I guess, without reapplication. It, I don't know, that's a, that's a great question. We can pick any number, right? And so...
I guess what I'm trying to avoid is, again, I don't like the idea of people hanging around with entitlements that get them around code modifications that, that we are making as a, as a deliberative body in order to address changing circumstances.
So have we removed that language from the extension? Because that language currently exists, right? That if, if criteria changes, then the extension isn't, isn't allowed, right? Or has that been removed?
No, that language is still there. It says the applicable criteria for the decision have not changed. That, that's one of the standards for getting a one-time, getting the one-time extension.
You're talking about the extension. I'm talking about the, the, the total number of years. In other words, I'm looking to keep the number of years that something is around for at a minimum.
Well, I guess that.
Inquisitively.
No, I mean, you, I guess I'm a little confused. I don't know why we would want to keep it at a minimum. I think not letting it be, not letting it go out too far. There's value in that, but keeping it at a minimum, I guess I don't understand that. I mean, I, I find it, it's difficult, having been through several process projects as, as a, as a non-experienced. I, I wouldn't even call myself a developer. But you know, when you work with these companies that have a lot of money and that can do all of these things very easily, you know, it, it's an advantage to them. And, and it's difficult for the, for the smaller guys who are trying to do stuff that it takes longer, it's, it's more difficult. And so I guess I just don't expecting things to happen quickly. Only benefits those that have the resources to make that happen.
Okay, it's six o'clock, Commissioners, and Eric, are you going to be around for when we, when we get into the, the main business?
Yes, I'll be glad to stay.
I don't think we're ready quite to go forward with our proposal there on the work session action items. And I know I had a couple more questions, but I don't want to lead it into our six o'clock time hour. So if you could stick around, I'd appreciate it. Just one comment. It seems like a lot of these things we're talking about right now are things that probably were and should have been discussed with the planning commission and then gone through and come up with their ideas and present them to us. And now it's like we're kind of just starting over again. So it's a little concerning to me. That being said, I'm going to start a regular meeting now. This is a meeting. Six o'clock for the Hood River County Board of Commissioners. Are there any additions or deletions from the agenda?
Chair Oats, I had one correction under the consent agenda. The staff reported an agenda request form were correct, but it was listed incorrectly on the agenda. And that has to do with the grant for the Seven Stream staging area with the state. It's actually an intergovernmental agreement, not a grant. So just a clarification there to reflect what is in the packet, not necessarily what's on the agenda. It's just a correction.
So it's not a grant. It's, what did you say, Jeff?
It's an intergovernmental agreement.
I G A. Okay, thank you. Any other deletion, additions or deletions? Any conflict or potential conflict of interest?
Yes, I have a conflict with the with the ordinance that is making changes to the Hood River County zoning code. And I'll be reading that before the discussion there.
Okay, make it clear. I didn't completely hear. Bob, you're saying you're not going to be involved with that discussion?
No, I've got a potential conflict that I will disclose at when it's appropriate. When we, when we get into that discussing zoning ordinance.
Okay, that much, much better. The first time you said a conflict. No, it's a potential conflict. Big difference. Okay, great. Public comment. Lynetta, do we have anyone on for public comment this evening?
No, we do not, Chair Oats.
Okay, thank you. Reports. Jeff, we'll start with you.
I just had one item this evening to let the board know that the county did hear from the federal government and we don't have any specific guidance as it relates to the the ARP money, but we did get some information that suggested that we need to register. And so we're in the process of doing that. And we're looking forward to getting some more definitive guidance on use of those funds.
Any questions for Jeff? Commissioner Perkins? Oh, I'm sorry. Go Karen.
I have some question and comments on the department reports. Do you want me to ask those of Jeff now or when I get to my time to report? There's some basic comments of some of the stuff that's in there in the packet.
Why don't you go ahead, Karen?
Well, my first one is it, does it seem like all the departments submitted a report? It seems like the sheriff was missing. Sometimes we hear from Belinda for prevention.
They were incomplete.
Probably just due to the overwhelming task at hand with the COVID and stuff. Can, will we be seeing those quarterly reports at a later date?
Certainly. Although the sheriff reports when the sheriff chooses to report.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The sheriff reports when he chooses to report.
And I wasn't sure if maybe our presentation from him at our last meeting maybe was, was to suffice from his report. I always like to see a little bit of information around the Norcore and use of the jail. So I'm always looking that one into his report. So I missed the sheriff report. And I saw Belinda just pop up. I don't know if she wanted to say something about her report, but we often see a prevention report in there too, that I appreciate and enjoy reading as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Joplin. I apologize. What you stated is exactly what happened, that I am overwhelmed with managing 600-plus volunteers and the call center and then doing my other work. But I will submit one and I apologize.
And that's understandable. And I hope that in the future, when you do have a moment to make a report for this quarter that we're looking at right now, that you include your overwhelming work and the things that you've been doing. So that we're all, you know, not only privy to that, but it's in the public record as to what the prevention department has been doing during this particular process. Thanks, Belinda.
Thank you.
And then a couple of other things. The one that I hope that we can have a discussion about is in the public works around the Panorama Point Park and the situation of the water. And that it won't be repaired for the entire year concerns me. It's one of our flagship parks for the county, one most appreciated by many of our visitors. And watching it suffer during our park shutdown was difficult enough. And we certainly heard a lot about that. And so to read in Michael's report that the water irrigation system is unrepairable and will not be repaired for 2021. I think is worthy of a conversation for our board to learn more about the obstacles there and if there are any other options that we might be able to be helpful for the public works department.
It's certainly a future agenda.
Okay, thank you. And then my last one was, I was wondering if, since Lynetta is helping us tonight, if she can make sure that Paige gets a celebratory note on our Facebook page about placing the ballot box in Parkdale. I'd like to make sure that gets out to our public and not just in our, in our reports.
I just saw it the last week. I drove by and was like, oh, wow. That's, that's really nice to see.
Right.
People will get to use it very soon.
Right. That was all my comments. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Karen, Karen, why don't you go ahead with your reports now?
Well, believe it or not, I don't really have anything to say about my own reports. So it's just been more managing COVID and trying to get some of our agency systems back to a new normal way of operating or at least planning for that. Thank you.
Yeah, I know you've been doing a lot. Thank you.
Commissioner Joplin, I'd appreciate it if you got your reports in on time in the future.
No, that's not good, is it?
Commissioner Perkins, you're up.
Continues to be busy. The AOC legislative pieces, the Public Safety Legislative Group. There's just a whole bunch of bills coming through. We did just get a whole bunch of police reform bills that seems like everybody's on the same page. Sheriff's Association, League of Organized Cities, AOC. All are signing on to a slate of reform bills. And so we'll see if they, if they survive and move through. But it was nice to see everybody kind of getting on the same page and pulling in the same direction. It can be a, it can be a polarizing group sometimes on some issues. Second Amendment's always the best. It's my absolute favorite. Immediately you see the party line split. It's interesting. Also, a whole bunch, and I know Chair Oats has been attending some of these, the Natural Resource Group. There's, there's a fair amount of legislation going through pertaining to forestry and water. So lots of bills to keep track of. I don't have time to track all of them, but well worth going to those meetings on, on the Monday that the AOC, well, actually now it's split up between Thursdays and Mondays. It's Thursdays and Mondays. But well worth your time to go and listen. Korea's been really busy. Again, a whole bunch of energy bills, lots of lots of impacts on small-scale distributed projects, lots of potential funding sources for resilience. So it'll be interesting to see what survives this session, but a lot of potential avenues for those types of projects to move forward. I did participate in a Global Warming Commission. It was actually a subgroup for the Governor's Global Warming Commission. It was led by OWEB, by Maida Lofsgarden. So I got pulled in as a, a natural working lands subgroup that was looking at ways to mitigate climate change, basically, looking forward. And it was, it was interesting. It was folks from all around the state. Adam McCarthy participated as well. And kind of the takeaway on that was, we need more resources to be able to figure out what programs actually can work in terms of altering forest management or ag practices, basically. Adequately fund extension was one of those that everybody agreed on. You know, we need to have the science available and we need to be able to build programs at the local level that, that work for the local conditions and not just have one size fits all programs coming out of the state and federal government. And think that's going to fit for a state that has high desert all the way to rainforest on the coast. So it was actually one of the better working groups I've been a part of. It was a couple of hours, really, actually about three hours really well spent. So I'm curious to see if that, if the recommendations that came out of that group actually make it up and make any kind of headway with the Global Warming Commission. And I think that's it for me.
Thanks, Les. Commissioner Babbitts?
Okay, let me just pull up my notes here. Yep, so there were, let's see, so Mid-Columbia Community Action. We did an extensive, I think it was a four-session planning period, which has now been completed. And we most recently have put in votes on our mission statement, although I'm not sure which one won, but there were just basically different wording of the same concept. I think I might have mentioned it the last time, but the Hamilton, which is that old motel which has been used for interim housing. They're now, we've now contracted with someone to prepare development proposal for converting that into affordable housing. So that's moved into a new phase. And as soon as we kicked that off, Kenny left on vacation. I think it was his 20th anniversary. So they went off to Hawaii and he thinks quieted down for a couple of weeks. He's just gotten back. So activity's starting there again. Mid-Columbia Housing, we had a meeting, but I don't think there's anything that's, that I would put it there that's important enough to pass along to this group. Visit Hood River also had a board meeting. And so what I took from it, I thought was most interesting, and you folks might be most interested in, is the reports of all of the various businesses, the tourism-related businesses or the seasonal-related businesses are that they're seeing a very strong summer coming along. And in fact, I, I just went on one of the websites just to see what hotel bookings are. And there are many, many days in the summer that are already booked up where hotels simply don't have, have spaces. But the problem that all these businesses are reporting is that they have no clue where they're getting their staff from. They are imagining a summer with tons of visitors and no staff to clean the rooms or to serve the meals. And, and the discussion about what the cause of it is, is did not come up with any, it didn't offer me any clarity. You know, this is a business that I'm not involved in, but it seems like, you know, some people believe that this is people not wanting to come back to work because of extension of benefits. And other people say that's really not the case, that the, the basic problem is housing. That we simply don't have housing for these folks. So people who, who would be arriving in town with some, you know, for some seasonal work to simply aren't coming here because they know that there's simply no place for them to live. So unfortunately, the problem I don't understand well enough. So we really haven't, no, no one's asked for a solution. It's simply something I'm, I'm bringing along that all the reports in the Visit Hood River Board Meeting suggested that we have an upcoming problem that no one can define very well. And that we don't have a solution to. So I can just pass that along. And then the final thing that I'll report on is ARPA funding. As you know, you folks asked me to go off and work with Commissioner Benton on, on putting some structure to this discussion. And, and we have met on that. And Bob and I met and Bob and I met with, with Jeff and with Darren. And, and we've constructed a four-tier model for framing the discussion. We have not solved the problem, but we have constructed a model which we think will help put it into a context that, that you all can, can, can participate in this, in this discussion and deliberation. And what we would like to suggest is a special meeting on the subject, since this is so fundamental and so we have four and a half million dollars, which people are expecting us to spend wisely. And it's a difficult thing to do in a meeting with the clock ticking and an agenda that has to get on to another item. So we would like to request the meeting next week to discuss this. And, and then we can introduce the four-tier model to you and, and start, we'll show you the examples and let you start plugging things into it. We're ready to share that, the four tiers with you. So as soon as we schedule a meeting, I'll pass that along to Heidi and Heidi will distribute that for everyone to look at. You're muted, Chair Oats.
Jeff, what do you think about that for the next week for work session on this?
If the board is so inclined to do so, certainly one can be scheduled. I, I am out of the office Wednesday, Thursday and Friday next week to bring the son home from college.
Arthur, on the 3rd of May, we have our, we'll probably have another one of our regular meetings. We could do a work session ahead of that. Would that work? That's not that far off, is it?
We, we talked about that and Bob, you come in and help me on this, but it really feels like this is such an important discussion. And it, it may go on. And I worry about us saying, okay, well, I guess it's six o'clock now. We have to go into regular meeting. This is, plus, you know, anything we do get a jumpstart on this. This is money that if there are things we can do that can help people now, money's coming to us very soon. In fact, it may be here by then. I'd like to know that we've done everything we can to be prepared to get the money out there.
Yeah, yeah, I would just add, I think starting the conversation as early as possible is good for the public to see. And given the conversation that Arthur and I had, as well as the conversation with Jeff and Darren, I think that it, it could be quite a long conversation and there's a lot of decisions to make. And so I think we need a significant amount of time and I think it would be good to get started sooner rather than later. So I think there is value. I mean, obviously we could wait, but I think there's value in starting it sooner. And so that's, that's the only thing I would add.
About Monday afternoon, Jeff, does that work?
That should be fine if, if that works for the board members.
Three o'clock, a good time?
So Chair, you're talking about next Monday, the 26th?
Yes.
Well, I, just to propose on the Monday, the 3rd meeting, is there pressing items on the agenda? Can we clear the agenda and just have this as the topic?
What I, what I think I, I should have explained is I feel like this is a two-part discussion. The first The first part, we'll get the juices flowing and then we'll actually be making decisions, the second part. So I, I'm, if, if we do it, if we clear the agenda, do it on, meeting on May 3rd, don't expect to be, to have decisions made by then. I, i- i- it's probably going to take a second meeting to, to, to resolve this.
I'm, I'm good next Monday.
I'm okay with Monday. I'm, I'm a little concerned with clearing the agenda on the third as I, I'm not sure where we're going with this COVID thing. I mean, it could be a little different next week or two.
Tendative conflict on Monday that I may be able to rearrange.
The 26th?
Yes.
Okay.
So if everyone else can make that meeting, I would suggest you do, and I'll do my best to rearrange my schedule.
Are they agreed with that? Okay.
And there was one other report issue, which actually, Chair Oats, I think when you do your report, you want to talk about the mounted bill.
Right.
So I'll, then I'll leave that off my report.
Yeah, and if we can, and I forgot to mention this, but there's also the Wild and Scenic Proposal that I would love to, to throw in there with that. And I just missed that bullet point I had in my notes.
That's what we're going to talk about. Okay, Bob?
I'll try to be quick. With Norcore, we've started the budget process. The, we've really ironed out what our last year's beginning fund balance is or was, which is important because we have a high confidence in it and it's the first year we've ever had high confidence in what that number is. So that's really good. The bad part is that it's not very much and that we are, it's difficult to, it, it's just a challenge to budget, given all the contracts we have and how important they are to our budget. With that, the Norcore, as I've said before, there's a 4% increase, accounting subsidies to, it's, it's used to balance the budget. There is, this is the first time since the history of Norcore that there is no budgeted line item for ICE at all in the juvenile or adult side, which I think is a, is good information for the public to hear or information they may be interested in hearing at least. And so, so that's good. I think we're, but there, there has been a, an increased reliance on the new US Marshals contract in the budget, which is, which is working out very well, but it is a substantial portion of the budget and that's a concern. So coming out of this budget cycle, we're going to be doing a similar thing to Hood River County and moving forward with recommendations to the board to pursue permanent funding. So we'll see where that goes. Just notes to take away from this year at Norcore, the, the facility didn't ever turn anyone away with respect to people coming to be lodged there. They, the only time that would happen is if a sheriff recommended they not be put inside the facility. But there were some rumors going around that Norcore was turning people down. That never happened. Also, never had an actual outbreak, which was good. One other thing that goes back to the budget item is their, their cost of PPE has increased a lot. And like, so that means a lot of gloves and the increase of $20 or $5 a box to $20 a box for their gloves is about a $70,000 impact on the budget, which is a lot, given, you know, given all the other things going on. So that's, you have a question, Arthur?
Yeah, wouldn't that be reimbursable though, under the, under the, the CARES Act?
So the costs that were incurred were reimbursable through the CARES Act. The costs moving forward aren't coming down though. So that's the issue is that it didn't come back down to $5 now that the production's, the, the retailers or vendors selling those have just kind of adopted a new price of $20 a box. So that's what, what that struggle is, I guess.
Yeah, I've noticed Harbor Freight isn't having their sales on gloves anymore.
The, the next item is the, the Bi-State Bridge Working Group, which is, Arthur is, is nice enough to assist me on there as the alternate. They're moving forward with looking for several pots of funding from the federal government, the state of Washington and Oregon to continue working on engineering. I would say the group as a whole, I think, agrees that this is our best opportunity for funding to replace the bridge, given the infrastructure projects that may, may be available or the funds for infrastructure projects coming out of the federal government, assuming they can get something passed. But, but it still, I guess, realizes, you know, there's still is a bit of a separation and, and support for the, the P3 approach, public-private partnership between Washington and Oregon. Oregon seems to be more open to it, myself and Mayor McBride, as well as Commissioner Babbitts and the folks on the other side of the river, not so much. And so, but I, we all kind of do agree that this is our best opportunity for funding, for not go that route. And, and we need to set up some sort of a deadline to where we get to that point and we don't have funding, we need to just go ahead and build a bridge, because that option's there, we just need to step through the door. So anyway, we'll, so that's ongoing. You know, the meetings are, are interesting, but they don't ever, we don't ever get as mu, as far as we'd like to with respect to meetings. And so with that, I, yeah, and also just worked on ARPA with Arthur. He says, he was very kind. He, he put together the tier structure, it was excellent and where we've made some changes to it. But I think it's a great starting place and we did have a pretty good, long discussion, but he had most, he's the one who put that together.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I got just a few things. Les mentioned the AOC Natural Resource Committee Group and, and things they were doing. And I attended that meeting here last week. One of the things was HB 2251, the Regional Water Management. And most attendees voted to abstain as they didn't have enough information. But as it just so happens to be, we already have done this in Hood River County, so it really wasn't relevant to us. And so I abstained as well, just because we've already done it. Next one was.
Just so you know, Chair Oats, I participated in, in the working group that was outside of, of AOC. And so that was being pushed pretty hard by a few counties that are really interested and repo ones. So Rep Owens is really, really pushing that. But yeah, that's a longer conversation.
Yeah, I'm sure you had a lot to do with getting that through for Hood River County. Thanks, Les. And I, and I'm glad we're way ahead of the game because it looks like some of the other counties aren't even thinking about it a whole lot yet. Anyway, and it, and it's going to be huge, it's going to be huge in Hood River County as well. HB 2520, adopting energy policies into statewide land use planning goals. And there was a lot of discussion about that. And then they found out that this would be optional for each county individually. And so at that point, everyone approved that, going ahead with that bill. So, so that each county has the discretion on whether to place statewide land use planning goals into, into their policy. So anyway, that's, that was the main things that I got out of that very long meeting. Thanks, Les. That was a lot of fun. ARPA, I, I know you guys are working on that. I, I assume you all saw the note from Nate wanting a real quick potential proposal or something. Did, did, did all the board members see that? Yeah, okay.
I submitted several projects, just so you know.
Oh, did you?
Yeah, I, I, I had a whole bunch of infrastructure projects from Crystal Springs. I reached out to Crystal Springs and Ice Fountain and the irrigation districts and, and, and the energy. There was a bunch of energy projects. So they're ones that we had sitting on the shelf, ready to go. So a, a whole bunch of people, I just collected them and handed them in to Anna Williams.
So, so Les, would those be the ones that were called programmatic priorities?
I don't know what they will fall under, to be honest.
You know, it took me three days trying to figure out what that word meant. But anyway, maybe that's what it meant, was trying to get the other programs besides the county itself. But I did type up a couple of little things and sent them in. Nate said, do it in five minutes. I think it took me three days, but it was just a couple of little things. One of them was the, the potential for the Rand Road property of, of the counties versus the cities and the funding that we could use. And I suggested a price tag of about $5 million to work with that potential problems or other similar low-cost housing and directed to the low-cost housing situations as they have specific list of priorities they wanted to look at. I would think in low-cost housing fit into a lot of those. The other one I was looking at was potentially moving the Public Works buildings out to the Odell Industrial Park and opening up that land for, again, whatever purpose, you know, we could, maybe a new courthouse, maybe low-cost housing, new housing. It's such a prime location right there. It's a strange place for a public works department, to tell you the truth. And I remember that when I was a little kid walking behind that and seeing that thing down in there.
I can give you a history of it.
Gravel pit.
There, there used to be something else there. I'll tell you about that later.
Okay, that was probably before me, Arthur.
It was 100 years before you, yep.
Okay, yeah, I forgot that. And then, then, oh, I had one other thing that I said to them. Oh, I also suggested that we could use some dollars into our community development positions to help with working with the building permits and also potential working towards urban areas, either Odell or Parkdale. And we, we need, and I suggested having one or two people for like three years. And I suggested a budget of $600,000 to $200,000 a year. And I, I know Les brought that up about not being able to meet the, the requirements for these farm labor housing because we couldn't get the darn permits through, and I mean, that's real. I mean, it just takes too long. And so one of those things that we could meet a lot of the criteria that the governor had put out and just with a little help, we could probably do some good things. So anyway, that's what I put out to ARPA. The one last thing I had that Arthur had brought up is, and Les has too now, had conversations with Blumenauer and Wyden's office and Ben's as of late about these proposals for Wild and Scenic River National Recreational Area and Wilderness Areas. And again, I, I kept saying, okay, we want to know what you're proposing. We want to be able to look at it as a commission and see how is this going to affect us? And we want you guys to work together. We want Ben's involved too, because we don't have, Blumenauer's not our representative. And it, in talking with Wyden's and Blumenauer's office, they said, yeah, we, we'd reach out to him. And then when I talked with Ben's, he said that he couldn't, he, it made it sound like he couldn't, he tried and they wouldn't even talk to him. So I'm not quite sure where we're going with this new system between Blumenauer and Wyden and, and Ben's because I, I know Walden was able to work with him, or work with Wyden fairly well, at least somewhat, and Blumenauer. But I think this is something we need to be a little bit concerned about as a commission because we don't want whatever this proposal is coming down and rammed down our throats without us at least having a chance, one, to look at and two, having our actual representative be involved with it. So.
Well, and Chair Oats, yeah, there's two, there's kind of two things going on there. One, yeah, there's a wilderness proposal that Blumenauer's office has put forward. And I had the same conversation with Representative Ben's this morning. And he basically said that Blumenauer's office said they weren't interested in working with, with Ben's. And I, and I was fairly involved the first time that one, I went up and hiked up around the mountain with Walden and Blumenauer. It was a very bipartisan, a lot of listening, a lot of input from, from local community and from local leaders. And this just, does not seem to be happening this time. So that's, the Wilderness Act has Wild and Scenic in it, but there's also a Wild and Scenic Act moving forward that's being put forward by Walden and, excuse me, by Wyden and Merkley. And so that Wild and Scenic designation is coming in two different places. Did have conversations with, with both Walden, excuse me, Wyden and Blumen, Wyden and Merkley. Too, too many legislators. And, and because Craig Dehart at Middle Fork had brought up that Co. and Elliott Creeks are both proposed in, in the Wild and Scenic Act. And that's really problematic for the infrastructure that's up there and a lot of the work that has to be done over the next decade with the Clear Branch Dam in terms of rebuilding it to meet seismic standards. And so the conversations with, with Wyden and Merkley went really well. They felt like they could likely potentially just pull those segments out. However, those segments are in the wilderness proposal from Blumenauer. So, so they're coming from two different directions. But I, it's a, it, it is of major importance to growers in the Upper Valley. If Middle Forks, if they're unable to manage those diversions, those are both really dynamic streams that are prone to debris flows and you have to rebuild your infrastructure. You, you have to get in those rivers, basically. I mean, there's, there's no way around it. They're just very dynamic and unstable systems. So that's a huge concern outside of the, just the wilderness expansion. So I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware of that. And I know Craig Dehart's been very active and reaching out, so.
I guess, I, I think that there is two things going on here. Number one is there are substantive issues concerning this bill or bills, which we need to be apprised of and we need to discuss. But the second problem, which Chair Oats described is something that I find far more concerning, which is I had a, a direct discussion with Blumenauer's aide and with Senator Wyden's field rep on that call where I impressed upon them in no uncertain terms the need and necessity for folks on this side of the mountain to be involved and active in this discussion. And I was told that they absolutely agreed that bipartisanship was necessary on this. And they stated that they felt that they had reached out first to Walden's office and then to Ben's transition office to discuss this, but there wasn't any interest. And now we hear from Congressman Ben's office that they reached out and were told that no one was interested in their input. So someone is not telling us the truth. And given that you have to have honesty and candor to, to advance anything in this world, that's the most disturbing thing to me, that, you know, someone effectively, you know, dissembled, you know, to not quite say lie, but someone said something which clearly isn't true. And I don't, you know, I don't even know who it was. I, I don't know what actually did happen, but it's very disturbing to me that, that this is happening and that we're left in this position where, you know, there's folks in Portland who are making the decisions on what's going to be proposed for land use classifications in forests that in Hood River County and Wasco County. And I don't get that.
Okay, yeah, well, it sounds like at least three of us have been on board with what's going on with this. We just want to make sure Karen and Bob knew too, that there's some situations going on that could be very serious for Hood River County. I'll try to keep in touch with the, the Senator and Representatives, field people and make sure that they let us know what, what's going on and try to come up with some more information about why we're not getting a bipartisan position here.
Chair, I, I would just add that I, I actually spoke with Representative Ben's on Friday and had the exact same comment as everyone else that, that spoke with him that is, he reached out and basically they told him they got it. They didn't, you know, we'll take care of this, it's our, our deal. And so, yeah, I would, I would agree with Arthur. I mean, that, that seems to be the really, really big concern. And then I guess, yeah, and because of that clarity, because I was, I, I am not exactly still clear, but some of you are more aware than I am, obviously, of how many proposals there are out there. I've heard of the Wild Streams, the Recreation Bill. I don't know if that's the Wilderness one or not. It is, okay. And so anyway, yeah, and it would be, it would really be nice to be included in that because I wasn't even very well educated on the specifics when I was talking with Ben's. And so it was, anyway, yeah, no, we definitely need to be included.
It, it's very difficult to be educated on something that's being put out there by several different groups in different directions. I'm, I'm glad Les has got a handle on it because I don't. I mean, it's been difficult.
So I, I have a suggestion as to how we might handle this. And so I, I've already put in a call to Jacob Egler and, and Wyden's office, but I, I wonder if, if maybe Chair Oats should be having this discussion instead of me. But, you know, he was present in these discussions where Congressman Blumenauer's office made these assertions. And I, I kind of feel like I, I wondered to what extent we can ask. Uh, and uh I I kind of feel like I I wondered to what extent we can uh ask Senator Wyden, who has been nominally saying that he is part of this uh Mount Hood Recreation Bill. Uh, if we can say, if if we can kind of call him in and say, you need to play rough on this because this isn't fair.
Yeah. Well, what's what's Wyden's representative over there in Bend? Is it Jacob?
Egler, Jacob Egler. Yeah, that's who that's. I I left a message for him earlier today. But that's why I'm saying I'm wondering if maybe you should, it it might make more sense for you to have that discussion.
Yeah, I'll do that. Okay.
And I will say in my conversations with Jacob Egler and Dan Mar, uh, I did ask about that bill. And they both said that that's not our bill. That's that's uh Blumenauer's bill.
Yeah, I was in a phone call with Jacob Egler and Liv Brumfield from Blumenauer's office. And and it was characterized to me that Jacob Egler was there because Senator Wyden is cooperating with him on that bill. That's what he said. So I don't think he gets to to play it both ways.
Yeah. Okay, enough discussion about that. Let's get back to the agenda.
What a mess.
Yeah, there's always something. Um, next up, the consent agenda.
I'll approve with the recommended uh modification.
Second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could you remind me what the modification is?
Under the uh grant agreement with Oregon Parks and Rec, it's actually approve a IGA agreement with Oregon Parks and Rec.
Yeah, I was scratching my head when I saw that because I didn't, I was wondering who was giving who money or what was being granted. But great, I'm glad that that correction was made. I had one question. Uh, from my understanding, for the fifty five thousand dollars that we're moving from the nine one one district, that that was a clerical error. Is 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 that correct, Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, so uh I I I'm a little bit concerned there because um I I have a fundamental concern that the nine one one uh fund is not as sustainable as the sheriff believes it is. Uh, and I did analysis of it with the numbers that we passed in the budget. And here we're taking fifty five thousand dollars out of unappropriated and moving it into uh into appropriated effectively. Uh, so I so I am going to to vote in favor of this. Obviously, the the clerical error can't be, uh, we we can't not have a cleric. We we can't not correct this. Uh, but I I guess I'm just stating that I will be looking more carefully at this in the budget cycle now because I am concerned about the long term uh sustainability of the nine one one um uh of nine one one. And then uh final comment is just that I apologize to everybody for slowing you down on the uh S P five eighty seven. Uh, I I'm usually, I I don't have a problem agreeing to things when they're rah rah, y'all, let's let's support this or let's support that. Uh, in this case, there is specific policy involved in it. And I have not been involved in it long enough to know what the arguments were on either side of it. So I did need time to do the research and I appreciate everybody's tolerance as I went and did that research. So thank you.
Hey, just just so you guys know, I don't I don't mind at all when you look at some of these and say, I I want to know a little more information. There's nothing wrong with that. Okay, um, Mr. Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes.
Mr. Joplin?
Yes.
Mr. Babitz?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next up, we have the work session. And. Seems like I learned a lesson here a year or two ago about pursuing with a first reading on something that the board actually wanted to have more discussions on. It was a little different this time with my experience. Uh, Eric, are you still in?
Yes, he's still here. He's coming.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Chair, would you mind if I read a uh, I mean, I can read it whenever you'd like me to read it, but I've got.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Bob. Read it.
Okay. Um, on advice of legal counsel and in an abundance of caution, I note that I may have a potential conflict of interest relative to the board's consideration of the ordinance amendments concerning permit timeline and extensions. This potential conflict is based upon my membership in Apollo Land Holdings, the extensions that have been granted for the amphitheater approval and any effect these amendments may have on such extensions. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Now, we've had, we had quite a discussion in the work session and uh there was some varied opinions on what we should or should not do. Uh, I think one of the things that was discussed quite a bit was what happens if we have holdups that are beyond appeals that can go on for some time? Is there anything we can do to uh uh have some type of process that could handle that so that the? Have you had time to think about that at all, Eric?
Well, I just thought about a couple of different options. I think certainly the proposal that Commissioner Benton put forward uh could potentially address that by having um the four year initial approval period, the two year non discretionary um extension period, and then a one year discretionary potential uh on an unlimited basis. Um, I guess the question that I would have is, is the board in agreement on what that maximum might look like? Are you open to having those unlimited? Uh, or is there some some timeframe that you'd like to put on that? The other option is to, you know, instead of that first um extension period, to keep the language and and make and keep that as non discretionary and then have the uh any future additional extensions be really subject to some new standards that that the board would would recommend on trying to differentiate between the current language that talks about, you know, the extension being um based on on reasons that the outcome wasn't responsible for. And then the uh extraordinary circumstances that um that you might envision on a case by case basis.
Um, Mike, you're still on mute.
On that proposal by the Planet Commission, it was originally four plus two discretionary or non discretionary, Eric?
Uh, discretionary for the two years.
So if I could comment on on that, uh, I I would not be in favor of anything that uh infinite. So uh, you know, uh, unlimited one year extensions is not something I would be in favor of. Uh, what I would rather see is some suspension of counting for the duration of some action so that it's not uh, so the the Board of Commissioners doesn't get to give you a, you know, a a ten year extension because you had a six month uh uh process that came in. But if you have a, you know, a three year legal process that happens in federal court, uh, I don't think that that should be told against your deadline. Uh, so I'm wondering if that's kind of an option number three, um, Eric? Or does that fit in one of your options?
It it just gets a little bit challenging to try to create standards to reflect that that type of scenario. I'm not sure what that might look like.
I just worry about something that 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 appears to the public and, you know, to to us to give uh greater discretion to the board. Uh, thi- this is something where where it it's going to become political and we're going to be um uh, we're going to be battered around for everything that we do on either side i- in these things. And to the extent that that it can be based on something that um uh parametric, uh, uh, where the 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 amount of time and the decision is 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 relatively routine and automatic. We have to trigger it, but that it it it's it's for an amount of time, which is then uh counted by something which everyone can look at their clock or look at the the a report and and understand whether the event has happened yet. Uh, it leaves me a little more comfortable, makes it a little less political, I think.
Well, if it if it helps the commission, you know, I've I've been at this business for twenty three years here in the county. And I think, you know, unfortunately, we have the Apollo situation as an as a prime example uh that everybody points to, but I would say it's definitely an anomaly. I cannot think of one other situation where um where we've granted more than a couple of extensions. And in the past, our permit approvals were for two years for initial approval, two years for an initial extension, four years, and then a one, one and one after that is for as long as you needed it. So right now, we're we're looking at a system that increases the initial approval period to four. It grants another potential for two, that's six years. Again, I I just can't think of too many examples that have taken that long. Um, so I I guess the wording that I would propose, if if you're looking to go that route, is something that um uh, you know, that that I I guess I'm not sure what that wording would be, but I think it would have to be something where you would elevate it to a public hearing. And um. So I anyway, I just think that we're we're considering things that are probably unlikely, um, in my humble opinion.
Well, and I think I think that by taking the appeals process uh out of the equation uh timewise, I mean, I think that's, I think that has probably solved, you know, most of the likely scenarios. Um, but I I do think there's a potential for, uh, I I don't think that permitting timelines uh from an environmental perspective are going to get shorter or less complicated. Uh, I expect those to become longer and more complicated uh as time goes on, so.
And more common.
And more common, yeah. Uh, so I mean, I like the idea of having that some some way of dealing with with that should it come up. Um, I just, I don't know what that looks like. And I'm with Arthur. I don't, I don't like, I don't like seeing there being an open ended, like, just go on forever. I would love to see it, um, you know, with fairly clear conditions, what those would be. I don't know. That that's always the the tough part.
Yeah, it seems like, I wonder if we could include something to where when these situations arise, uh, that the applicants are aware of, there's some process, and maybe I'm over complicating it, but somehow that they could indicate that this is what had happened and why they've been stopped. And that uh there was a way to vet that that kind of stopped the clock like Arthur's talking about and allowed them, you know, allowed them to wait till that trans- that process transpired lawsuit clearing uh some sort of a environmental hurdle or whatever, and then restarted once it once it cleared. I don't know. I'm just trying to think of other options where you're not putting a continuous, I know the word unlimited scares people. I mean, it's our current process, and so it shouldn't, I don't think. But it it does for whatever reason. I'm more concerned about putting a full on stop point on the end of, on the end of it. Um, anyway, I don't know. That's if that confuses things more, it it may. I'm just trying to come up with how to frame that so that it makes sense like Arthur said. Isn't that, you're looking for something like that? I mean, that's what you're suggesting, Arthur, is a a point at which it suspends the clock, I guess.
Yeah, I am. And and the problem is um, the these, I I know that this is unlikely. Uh, and I I I I get that and uh I I certainly appreciate and and value Eric's uh experience in this area. But I also know from uh trying to set an agenda in a world that becomes one hundred percent Walmart all the time, uh, it can really disturb uh local government tremendously when you do get sucked into one of these vortices. So spending a little time uh addressing this so that we close at least one more little um uh possible, you know, even if it's, even if it's a a a very much uh not a likely event, uh, someone at some point in the future may be thanking us for having uh um saved their agenda so that they could actually work on real issues instead of some ridiculous debate over over how many months someone's supposed to get to review a process.
So, Arthur, are you are you suggesting that uh we let Eric think about this a little longer and see if we can come up with something a little more flexible on those unsuspected circumstances?
I'm sorry, yeah, I believe, I guess I'm not quite sure how a process works, but I believe that that everything that we've talked about uh is sufficiently different from what was placed before us, that we would have to schedule it out again for another hearing. Isn't that the case or?
I think so.
I think so.
Yeah.
So therefore giving Eric some time to uh to work on this. I see Lisa's come in.
Say yes, but you answered your question, so.
Okay. Thank you.
If if we were to change.
Sounds like a good idea. Yeah. It must be taken as it is today. Yeah.
I I personally think that the part where the appeals is taken off the time clock is the most significant part of this whole process. As a matter of fact, I think that was the reason for this whole process because it shouldn't be a situation where anyone can continually appeal something just to prevent something that they didn't think was correct in the first place, even though it's gone through the whole public and governmental process to be allowed. And so that this was uh, I like that that's in there. And as far as the the four plus two, two discretionary, right, Eric?
Uh, as proposed right now, it's the the two is discretionary, yes.
Yeah. I wouldn't have a problem with it. I I think the Planet Commission talked a long time about it and and have been involved in this process and know what's been going on and uh. But uh, it sounds like some of the board members would like to see if we can't look at something in case there are some other issues that come up that could start holding it up, so. Um. I'm not quite sure where to go here, Eric. Would you, would you like to think about that for a while? Go ahead.
Um. Commissioner Babitz is correct. There's an item on the agenda that's not actionable at this particular point in time. So staff, um, as a result of that, will need to go back and uh look at the language. I think board members have provided sufficient direction for um staff to be able to look at some alternative language. Um, that's what will be done and we will be back in front of the board with perhaps some ideas um that may work for the board as a whole.
Do the majority agree with me? I I'm not sure that everyone's weighed in on this. So so it might be that the majority wants to continue with it as is.
I support um adding additional language to accommodate an unforeseen circumstance where an applicant has performed due diligence to meet the timeline and due to elements outside their control has not been able to.
Yep, I I do as well.
Yeah, I I I think they're looking for additional courage, Arthur.
Great, thanks.
Okay, everybody on board with that? Okay. Thanks. Thanks for all the work, Eric. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The only thing I would say is, I mean, we've had a discussion about this. Uh, this is legislative. Uh, and I don't want to, maybe I'm the wrong one to be involved, but how much work could be done with staff? Uh, I guess it could be emailed out to us when staff gets it ready. I'm just wondering if there's any value in in us working with staff at all before the next meeting or not.
I I would leave regular process and not touch anything, not do anything unusual here.
I I, okay, that's fine. I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, yeah, Bob, you better not do that.
Oh, I wasn't going to suggest that I did it. Trust me. I know.
I don't think any of us want to touch that hot potato.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Shouldn't be a hot potato.
Okay. So we're going to skip this reading of the ordinance because we're going to be looking at changes. So thank you, Eric, for everything.
Thank you.
Next up on new businesses, planning commission appointments. Recommendation, reassign existing planning commissioner A.J. Kit to fill the vacant District One seat. Change his existing term and direct staff to readvertise for an at large position.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So uh, does, do we have any um uh normal process or 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 norms in this where uh an appointment within someone's district, uh, where they have a special say on that appointment? So it, so we we don't generally do this because it it seems to me like my my first question would be, uh, how does Commissioner Joplin feel about this, given that this is her district? Uh, is that a, is it crazy to think that that's important?
Thank you. I think before we get started on that, it's a great question, but before we really get started on the conversation, I think I'd like to hand it over to Jeff if he'd like to share. There was a new applicant that applied um but submitted her application just after the deadline. Jeff, did you want to comment on that or would you like for me to introduce that?
Um, I am aware that that someone submitted an application and um we can bring that before the board and that can be considered.
So I would like to propose for all of you to consider that we not consider this um option of reassignment that um we have received an applicant, a completed application. It just came in after the deadline. I'd like to request that we accept it anyway and that we schedule the interviews for the two District One applicants at our next meeting.
So you two, who are, there there was one application that came in. So who are, there was one application that came in, but we have two applicants?
Yes.
I'm confused.
One came in under the deadline and one came in after the deadline.
Okay. Can, can we reopen a time period just so that there's no question about them both coming in and they can both resubmit? Is that possible?
I just.
I mean, I don't know how much time we have.
I was just wanting to really move forward. I mean, the application period has been ended already.
Okay, so if any, if any more come in between now and the next meeting, will those be included?
If that is the board's pleasure, we can, we can do that.
Lisa, do you have an opinion on this?
Just, if, I don't think you're required to readvertise. So I think the decision is whether you want to go ahead and accept an application that was submitted late and then go ahead and schedule interviews or not.
So what I think Bob is saying is rather than accepting an application that came in late, we can reopen the period, extend it until next Monday, as an example, and then this is no longer late.
Yeah, you can reopen the period and extend it.
So I would make the motion that we reopen the application period until next Monday, the 26th, I believe it is. Yeah, the 26th at 5:00 PM. And ask staff to process any applications that come in during that time.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Joplin?
Yes.
Commissioner Babbitts?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Okay, so we're going to readvertise that through next.
We don't have to readvertise. We're simply reopening.
A reopen. Okay. Okay, next up, letter of support, Port of Cascade Locks in-city vertical farming concept. This came to me by Mark Johnson, who works for the Port of Cascade Locks, wondering if we could sign this letter of recommendation for this potential development in Port of Cascade Locks. I did talk to Jess Groves, who's the president of the port today, and he said he didn't have an opinion one way or the other whether it really made any difference, but he said he didn't see any reason why you couldn't. So I just didn't want to be stepping on the toes of the Port of Cascade Locks. But he was fine with it for whatever reasons. I don't know if you got a chance to look at it. It's an interesting concept that's starting to take shape in a lot of different places around the country. Did you all get a chance to look at the proposed letter they wanted me to sign? It was pretty generic.
I looked at the presentation too. It's fascinating stuff, but I know so little about this. I feel like, I feel unprepared to, to offer an opinion to Cascade Locks that they wouldn't have by viewing it themselves.
I know. I kind of felt that way too. That's why I want to call Jess, because it just seemed a little strange that we'd be telling them what to do with their properties.
Well, man, if, as long as they're comfortable getting a letter of support and they're, you know, asking for it, then I don't see any reason why not.
So I'm confused. So who, so Mark Johnson is acting in what capacity requesting this letter?
He's, what's his official position? It's with the Port of Cascade Locks. He's kind of like their legal, not legal, he works on all their projects and all their things down at Salem.
So he's their lobbyist?
Yeah.
Yes.
Probably is their lobbyist.
Liaison lobbyist.
So he's asking, so the Port of Cascade Locks is asking us to write a letter to the Port of Cascade Locks as the county commission supporting a private company's proposal to build something at the Port of Cascade Locks?
They're probably wanting to leverage letters of support, basically showing they've got support within the community in the county. So it, I'm sure it's just, it's a, it's a step in building support for funding and anything else that they need.
You all get a chance to read the letter. It's really short.
It's really short.
Generic. So whatever you guys think, I, my original thought was, this is strange. But I, I've done stranger things. So that's why I brought it to you guys. I didn't want to just do it.
Again.
I'm going to pull up the letter now.
I mean, if the, if the bodies are, you know, there's no opposition, then I don't, I don't see why we wouldn't.
I think it is their way of asking, being that whoever is an agriculturally based county, is there opposition to supporting these farm, in-city farm projects? I think they're just asking us if we're okay if they pursue this type of development in their port properties, being that we're an agriculturally based county. That's the way I read it. That's what I'm thinking.
I guess that's possible, but I didn't get that from either one. So I don't know. I know they're not going to grow pears in some high-rise in Cascade Locks.
I guess I would be fine with signing it, Chair, but maybe call them, call Jess first and say, hey, I'm going to sign this. Is this what you're, are you interested in receiving this? I mean, it is a little odd it came from. Okay, okay. Yeah.
I guess I'm okay.
Yeah, as long as you know we're not stepping on anybody's toes.
Okay. We don't need to vote on that, do we, Jeff?
I don't think so.
Okay.
That way, if something goes wrong, we can just blame you.
Yeah.
So what, what was he doing?
I don't remember this at all.
Maverick?
Okay, are we going to go into executive session, Jeff, under labor negotiations? Okay, this, this time I'm going to.
Sorry, Chair Oates, this is Lynette Ali. Please give me about one minute to remove all of the attendees.
Sure.
Thank you.
Are we going to be able to bring it up on?
I'm going to bring it up on. Lynette, I was struggling with getting it to come up, so I just. All right, Chair Oates, we should be good now. Thank you.
Oh, we're still recording.
Except for that. One moment, please.
I've been it.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah. Now you, now you never run.
Now I do my spiel. Take us out of executive session, put us into regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Hearing none, we'll call this meeting to an end. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody.